And welcome to the April 6, 2023, meeting of the Boulder City Council. I'm going to gavel us into session here. Good to have you all here. We are going to start with a call to order.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. We will start tonight's roll call with Councilmember Benjamin.
Present.
Mayor Brockett.
Present.
Councilmember Fokerts.
Present.
Friend.
Here.
Joseph.
Here.
Spear.
Present.
Mayor Protem Wallach.
Virtually present.
Weiner.
Present.
Ann Yates.
Right here.
Mayor, we have our quorum.
Great, thanks so much. Before we get to the business of the evening, perhaps, Matt, you'd like to step in with a dad joke?
Indeed. Topically relevant for tonight. So what's the difference between a well-dressed person on a unicycle and a poorly dressed person on a bicycle? Attire.
Okay. That was even worse than usable. I don't know. All right. So that's our official piece of business. If I could get a motion to amend the agenda, we've got a few changes here. To add item 3F, which is consideration of a motion to provide the acting city attorney authority to appoint special counsel to investigate, and if necessary prosecute a complaint filed related to an alleged code of conduct violation filed pursuant to 2710C BRC 1981. Also to add item 8B, update on council process for making a decision on SB 23213, state involvement in local misuse matters, and also item 8C, library district board of trustees update. And also to reorder items 1B and 1C so that 1B becomes the Conference on World Affairs Declaration, and 1C becomes the Space Science Month Declaration.
So moved.
Second.
Great, we've got a motion to second, all in favor of amending the agenda. Raise your hand. Okay, that's unanimous. The agenda is duly amended. So we are now going to go into our first declaration, Boulder Arts Week, presented by Councilmember Spear.
Boulder Arts Week is the city's only large-scale inclusive celebration of our community's artists and robust arts and culture offerings. Our city's 10th celebration of Boulder Arts Week will feature digital and in-person experiences from our musicians, dancers, actors, authors, and artists of all media in events in every neighborhood of Boulder. Boulder is one of the most vibrant arts communities in the United States, ranking in the top 1% in the concentration of artists, arts organizations, and creative businesses. Our arts and the culture they create in Boulder make our community stronger. Our investments in our city's arts community strengthen us as individuals and as a collective. Art bridges divides and connects people across differences. Art narrates the most critical issues of our times and helps us share our unique stories and perspectives with each other. Art challenges and inspires us. It helps us find joy, navigate obstacles, heal from trauma, and build connection, creativity, and community. And artists bring us all these benefits while managing the impacts of floods, fires, gun violence, and pandemics on their own lives. Our arts community helps make our lives whole and full, and too often we fail to recognize the essential value of the arts during economic downturns when the arts often suffer the first and deepest cuts, not only jeopardizing the livelihoods of artists but minimizing their important work when our community most needs their support. Despite the robust role the arts play in our city's economic vitality by creating jobs, attracting new businesses, building an attractive environment for skilled and educated workers, and generating sales tax revenue in our city, the arts have not recovered from the pandemic as quickly as the rest of our economy. Boulder Arts Week 2023 is an opportunity to celebrate and support our still-recovering arts community. For a decade, the arts leaders who collaborate on Boulder Arts Week have amplified the visibility of the arts within the local community and highlighted the breadth and depth of Boulder's arts culture. They will do so again this year, and we encourage the community to join us in celebrating our artists by participating in some or all of the many Boulder Arts Week 2023 events. With gratitude to the artists who enrich and sustain our community, we, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, declare April 7 to April 15, 2023, as Boulder Arts Week.
Thank you so much. My name is Tiffany Crowder, and I am here with some of my fellow artists at The Crowd Collective. On behalf of the Boulder Arts community, we want to thank the City of Boulder and the City Council for your continued support. We are so looking forward to Boulder Arts Week. It's one of our favorite events of the year, and we've been participating since we opened our doors about five years ago. So we're kicking this year off with the Nobbo Art District First Friday tomorrow evening from 6 to 9 p.m. We'll have 12 of our 14 artists there with their studios open. We also have a very special and fun show in the gallery that's opening by two of our artists, Helen Halbreter and Eleanor Bostrum. And we'll also have live music, thanks to a sponsorship from the City of Boulder Office of Arts and Culture. So we want to encourage everyone to check out the calendar online. It's at boulderartsweek.org. There's over 150 events on there. You can go and see performances, classes, exhibitions, and studio tours. So even if you can only make it to one event, we really want to encourage you to go out and support the local arts community. So thanks again. Your support is truly appreciated, and we look forward to seeing everyone this next week. Thank you.
We'll see you out there for Arts Week.
Yeah.
Count on it. All right, and next we have a declaration for the 75th anniversary of the CU Conference on World Affairs, presented by Bob Yates.
Hey. Betsy, come on up, too. I'm joined up here by the chancellor of the University of Colorado, Dr. Phil DiStefano, Assistant Vice Chancellor Lori Call, and Betsy Block, who is our community chair for the Conference on World Affairs this year. I need glasses. Thanks, Bill. On April 12, 1948, at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, a 32-year-old assistant professor of sociology at the University of Colorado named Howard Higman opened a panel discussion in room 213 of the university's arts building with the scintillating title, "World Bank and International Loans." Hence, the Conference on World Affairs was born. On April 12, 2023, 75 years to the day after that first panel, the University of Colorado's Conference on World Affairs will celebrate the presentation of more than 10,000 panels over the course of three quarters of a century. The thousands of topics presented each April during these 75 years covers a range of topics, including politics, religion, art, science, media, business, climate, housing, war, sex, taxes, race, trade, film, government, history, finance, and technology. The conference program is collaboratively developed, features important and contentious issues, invites different perspectives, and supports civic debate. For 75 years, college students, professors, and area residents have gathered on the CU campus to hear brilliant panelists from around the world debate the pressing issues and questions of the day. Longtime CWA panelist and renowned film critic Roger Ebert dubbed it "The Conference on Everything Conceivable." While CWA founder Howard Higman, who led the conference for almost 50 years, died in 1995, the conference has survived him and thrived. Through a unique collaboration of CU students, professors, and community leaders, the conference draws thousands of people from across campus and around our broader community to hear Nobel laureates, U.S. senators, corporate CEOs, poets, scientists, and religious leaders grapple with the problems of our day. Panelists through the years have included Eleanor Roosevelt, Harry Belafonte, Henry Kissinger, Rachel Maddow, Yitzhak Rabin, and Joe Biden before he was president. The climate-oriented program this year will include topics such as "Democracy in Hotter Times", "Greenwashing: Can I Trust an Organization's Climate Claims?", and "The Colorado River Crisis: Where Do We Go From Here?" It will also include keynote addresses by renowned ice photographer Jim Baylog of the Chasing Ice fame and former Patagonia CEO and climate activist Rose Macario. Therefore, we, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, recognize and celebrate the 75th anniversary of the Conference on World Affairs, and we invite the community to attend the 75th conference on April 13 and 14 this year to engage with robust content and make inspiring connections in this evocative community. With that, I want to turn it over to Chancellor DiStefano.
Thank you, Councilmember Yates. It's a pleasure to be here, and I want to thank you for taking the time during this evening's meeting to acknowledge the 75th anniversary of the Conference on World Affairs. We appreciate the longtime support of you, City Council, city staff, and the broader Boulder community. I know many of you have served as panelists, facilitators, and volunteers over the years. We have community members who have opened their homes for our visiting speakers, and thousands of Boulder residents have filled the Glenn Miller Ballroom and Mackey Auditorium to hear the diverse insights of scientists, politicians, environmentalists, and film critics over the past seven decades. I believe it's the partnership between the university and the broader community that has ensured CWA's ability to generate new perspectives and foster creative discussions since 1948. We are thrilled to host this year's Conference on World Affairs on April 12 through the 14. We are building on the success of the Right Here, Right Now Global Climate Summit that we hosted with the United Nations Human Rights in December. So all CWA will be focused on issues on climate, environment, and human rights. We start Wednesday afternoon with a keynote by CU alumnus James Baylog, who is an incredible environmental photographer and mountaineer. Thank you. I'm also excited, as you mentioned, Bob, to host a discussion on Thursday evening with Rose Macario, the former CEO at Patagonia. I know that they will have some interesting insights to share, and that's exactly what we hope to achieve with these events. For the sixth consecutive year, most of the sessions will be livestreamed, but as locals. You have the privilege of joining in person. It remains free and open to all due to their generosity of CWA's donors and loyal volunteers, as well as the speakers themselves. Registration is recommended so you can stay up to date with the conference schedule, and you can do so at colorado.edu/cwa. I want to conclude by reiterating my gratitude to the Boulder City Council and our entire community for supporting this longstanding conference. You have shown up personally and served as ambassadors for CWA as you do for so many CU Boulder programs and initiatives. Thank you so much for your support of the conference and your acknowledgement of the rich and enduring legacy that CWA holds for the Boulder community.
All right. Thanks so much for joining us, Chancellor DiStefano, and Lori Call, and Betsy Block. Really appreciate the partnership with the university on this and so many other things. And we will see you out there at CWA. All right, our last declaration of the evening is Space Science Month Declaration, presented by Councilmember Benjamin.
Thanks, Aaron. In continuing the partnership with the University of Colorado, it's sort of fitting to stick with that theme. In December 1968, the astronauts of Apollo 8 were attempting to be the first humans to ever leave low Earth orbit and circle the moon roughly a quarter of a million miles away. It was on the fourth lunar orbit that astronaut William Anders took a picture of the Earth rising as seen from the far side of the moon. This is arguably one of the most famous pictures ever taken. Most many historians attribute the galvanizing force of establishing Earth Day on April 22 to this famous Earthrise photo. It is truly the first time we saw our planet surrounded by the emptiness of space, and perhaps more importantly, we saw the fragility of our home as the atmosphere appeared as nothing more than the skin of an apple. The environmental movement as we know it today was in large part created by humanity's pursuit of the cosmos. For over 60 years, our home of Boulder, Colorado, has carried on this legacy of space science and helped forge countless new discoveries, technologies, and industries. The University of Colorado, CU, often carries the distinction as being the number-one NASA-funded public university in the country. CU Boulder has also prepared and graduated generations of students that go on to make lasting contributions to the combined fields of space science around the world. Ball Aerospace is Boulder's number-one employer while building many of the instruments and technologies for the most well-known and consequential spacecraft and orbiting telescopes ever assembled, like the Hubble Space Telescope, the Kepler Space Telescope, Worldview 1 and 2 spacecraft, the Mars Reconnaissance Orbiter, and the James Webb Space Telescope, just to name a few. Accompanying Ball are numerous other aerospace and defense contractors that make huge contributions to our national security. Boulder hosts more than half of Colorado's 30-plus federally-funded research labs, including NOAA, the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, LASP, the Laboratory for Atmospheric Space Physics, NCAR, the National Center for Atmospheric Research, and NIST, the National Institute of Space Technology, and so many more. It is estimated that Boulder's space science community generates over $1 billion to our state's economy. Spanning unimaginable scales of space and time, from that of quantum physics to the origins of our universe and everything in between, Boulder is home to world-renowned scientists, researchers, administrators, and staff that continue to expand the knowledge of new frontiers. As such, Boulder stands out as one of but a few cities around the world that lay host to so many of these industries and researchers. As is often joked, one can throw a rock in town and likely hit a scientist, as is a testament to the reputation of Boulder. We, the City Council of the City of Boulder, Colorado, declare April 2023 as Space Science Month and celebrate the people, institutions, and industries that have informed, inspired, and unleashed generations of imaginations to seek understanding of our place in the cosmos. Thank you.
It says the residence of space immigrant Mark from Orc. I just had to bring that up. Okay.
Okay, I like it.
And with that, so our last item, and one D in our call to order, is a municipal court and Boulder Police Department quarterly update. And I believe Judge Cook will be starting us off with that.
Yes, thank you. With me tonight, I have Jim Wise. He's one of our probation officers. And I've been at the court for almost 22 years, and he's been there longer. So he's a tremendous wealth of knowledge. Also in the audience is Devon Kissett-Kelly, who's our deputy court administrator. You can go to the next slide. Just want to remind, I just have this at the beginning to remind everybody about the underlying principles guiding the municipal court. In next slide, please. So you've probably heard, just generally speaking, that courts had a big backlog as a result of COVID. And if you'll go to the next slide, it's not just our court, it's courts all over the country. But for us, the backlog was created by the fact that we didn't have court sessions for a relatively short period of time, actually, that we were closed. But we also had jail standards that were put into place at that time that limited the capacity at the jail. So that excluded pretty much all municipal defendants for a period of time. And sensitivity to financial hardship, so some of the sanctions that we might have used, like default judgments against people who didn't appear for traffic court, those were delayed and held in abeyance. Anyway, so those are the kinds of things that happened that created a backlog. Next slide, please. So what we've been doing is we've been addressing that, trying to get that up to date. We're now three years out from the onset of the shutdown. And essentially, we went back through the cases over the last three years that had not been resolved. We identified criminal cases that could be pursued, and warrants were issued if we needed to issue those. We also determined what we were going to do with the noncriminal cases. There were cases that were probation cases that people just, you know, they came to court, they did their initial court interaction, and then they just kind of fell off the map. And so we figured out how we were going to do that. And many of our standard processes, like issuing warrants and default judgments and so forth, had been held in abeyance. Those have all been reinstituted at this point. So I really appreciate the work that staff has done to support this because it's not just me that addressed the backlog. This was a whole bunch of other people who were involved in that. But we're back up to kind of pre-COVID operations in all regards. Next slide, please. All right. A few administrative updates, and if you'll go to the next slide. I want to talk with you about our public defender. So for decades, we can't even figure out how far back, but for decades, we had the CU Law Clinical Program representing our defendants in municipal court. And so we had student lawyers operating under the Student Practice Act with oversight by a professor, and they represented our indigent defendants. And they gave us notice in December of last year that they would not be continuing that anymore, and we're taking a different direction with those students. But representation is mandated by the state and U.S. Constitution. So then we needed to figure out what we were going to do. So we acted pretty quickly to get two new public defenders. They are two women who are in a law firm together. They are OADC-approved attorneys. So OADC is the Office of the Alternate Defense Counsel. That's like the parallel public defender's office for the state that represents people who are charged with crimes, but where the public defender can't represent them because there's a conflict of interest. So there's a group of attorneys that are approved to provide representation to indigent defendants at different levels. You know, some are approved for like the most serious cases, you know, homicides and others, felonies, misdemeanors, et cetera. So the beauty of having an OADC-approved law firm working with us is that we don't have to pay extra to pay to have somebody come in and assess them and make sure they're providing accurate oversight, which is what the state law would require if we didn't have people with that kind of stamp of approval. So it's great. We were able, with the help of the City Attorney's Office, who moved this contract through very quickly, to get them in place and approved. But you will be seeing this come up as part of the budget process. We had a screaming deal with the Legal Aid and Defender Program because they had a lot of benefit in being able to educate their students in the ways of practicing law. And that's, in this situation, we're paying more of the standard rate. So just wanted to alert you to that. Next slide, please. A couple of technology updates. So you've probably heard this from BPD, but they are starting to migrate to a system that will allow them to write electronic tickets in some cases. What that means, though, is there needs to be an interface with the court. The system that they're using is the same as CU PD, which is very beneficial for us. What that will ultimately mean is that we can hopefully import the data that's generated by their citations directly into our court records management system rather than having to do manual entry, which is what we do now. So that would be a huge benefit for us. And, but it has required a lot of work on our end to make those systems talk with each other. And so we've had staff working very hard on that, under the supervision of Devon, who's been the main interface. The other big technology piece, and you heard me mention this really briefly at your retreat, is that we are nearing the end of the RFP process for a client management system that will support the work that's being done collaboratively on behalf of unhoused or recently housed clients. And collaboratively, that means people within the city, like us, the homeless outreach team, the city attorney's office, other folks, as well as service providers outside of our system, they will also be able to have access. So people from the Behavioral Health Assistance Program, people from Focus Reentry, people... I'm trying to think, there's one other big one there that I'm missing. But anyway, it will allow us to have a true by-name list of people who are unhoused in the community. Be There is the other one I was thinking of. And most communities say that their by-name list is the one that's generated by people who are on the list for housing. But as you know, there are some people who aren't on that list. So to the extent that we can capture all of those, it would be really great. And I have that inverted pyramid because people will have different levels of permissions to access the data because not everybody, for instance, will be able to see sensitive HIPAA-protected information. But if there's a release of information in place for that service provider, then they can see that. So really excited about that. It's taken much longer than we thought to get through this process. It's taken much longer than we thought to get through this process, but we're hoping, our fingers crossed, that we'll get to the end there pretty soon. Next slide, please. So a couple of other administrative activities. We've been updating our relief judge contracts, and most importantly, we are on a trajectory to hopefully fairly soon recruit and hire a new court administrator. I think most of you know that James Cho, our court administrator, retired effective November 4th. Our interim court administrator has been Pam Davis. We love her. She's been doing a great job, but we can't keep her forever. And, but what we did was we took that opportunity to work as our leadership team, so our deputy court administrator, Devon, the two judges, and Pam, really on like, do we have the right department structure? Are there some things that we could do that would make things work better and so forth? So that is still in process. Hopefully, the organizational piece, the structural piece, will be ready to share pretty soon, but once that's formalized, we'll be then recruiting for that position. So stay tuned. Next slide, please. So I want to, I know I've talked with you about this before, but I want to highlight this again and get a little bit more into the weeds on it for you, because it does have some impact on some of the things that you hear more day-to-day. And if you go to the next slide, this is sort of a summary of criminal justice reforms that had happened, starting in 2014 in the state legislature, that have impacted municipal courts. And I'm not going to walk you through each of those. If you have questions about any of those for me, I'm happy to answer them. But what I really want to do is focus on those green lines in the middle, which have to do with bond reform. And if you'll go to the next slide, this is where I'm going to walk you through that piece. So the first restrictions on bonds came in 2019. Up until that point, the state law was silent on what types of bonds municipal courts could set when people were brought in on a warrant or on a probable cause arrest and brought before a judge to set bond. So at 2019, the state required personal recognizance bond. That means you get out on your own signature, no money has to be posted, for municipal offenses, unless they were substantially similar to a Class I or Class II misdemeanor in state court. And that basically brought municipal court offenses in alignment with Class III misdemeanors. So that was the rule for state courts for Class III misdemeanors. In 2019, they made it applicable to the municipal courts. 2021, they added the requirement that courts hold bond hearings within 48 hours of arrest, going into effect in April of 2022. In 2021, they also added the requirement that personal recognizant bonds were required, where the maximum penalty for an offense was less than six months, except in very limited circumstances. So that added an additional sort of lens by which you had to make these bond evaluations. And then in 2021 and 2022, many state court misdemeanors were classified, and the penalties were reduced for some of them. So whereas there used to be Class I, II, and III misdemeanors, as well as petty offenses, which had no jail associated with them, they completely got rid of Class III misdemeanors. And all those Class III misdemeanors either became petty offenses and got downgraded, or they became Class II misdemeanors and were upgraded. And so they also, at the same time, reduced the maximum penalty for Class II misdemeanors to 120 days in jail. So the effect of that was that fewer municipal offenses are substantially similar to Class I or Class II misdemeanors, because some of those, you know, that basically left fewer in that category. And so that meant fewer cases where we had some discretion based on that criteria. And it also, because they reduced the penalty for Class II misdemeanors in the state courts, basically PR bonds are required for all state court misdemeanors as well, unless they're Class I misdemeanors. So a whole bunch of people who were charged with very low-level offenses are required to have PR bonds, whether they're in state court or the municipal court. So I just wanted to kind of walk you through that, to understand why we are where we are with our restrictions on holding people on a pretrial basis for municipal offenses. I know you may have some questions about that, but we're going to get to the community court stuff, let you hear from Jim, and then I'm happy to circle back with that if that's where you're at. All right, community court update, if you can go to the next slide, please. I just want to remind everybody that community court addresses a very small group of unhoused status offenses. Public safety crimes are presumptively ineligible for community court. So those crimes that you see in those two kind of purplish boxes, none of those crimes are community court-eligible offenses. And I want you to know that we do take public safety seriously, and that when we're confronted with one of those violations and adjudging a case of one of those violations in our court, the full range of sentencing options is on the table. Next slide, please. But the programmatic updates that I want to give you, a couple of things that we're really excited about. So you heard me, and I know you were really interested in this when we started it with community court. We allocated quite a few of our funds for substance use and mental health treatment. And for the first year-plus of that programming, and this is still funded by the state court grant, we had a contract with BTS, also known for Center for Change, and to be honest, that didn't really work out so well, because that, the service provider we had did not, was not really able to meet the unhoused people with where they were at. That person was really looking for these people to be really ready to say, "I'm ready to make change." And people who are unhoused are usually not at that stage of the cycle. And so what we did, beginning at the beginning of this year, and again, thank you to Devon, she approached several other providers, but the NAROPA was like the one that came out in the lead. And so we now have a contract with NAROPA, and there's a professor at NAROPA who teaches counseling, who's overseeing counseling students who are now providing this service to our municipal court clients. And they're coming out to our community court sessions, they're meeting with them there. It's, the feedback we're getting from the individuals that are working with these folks has been immediately positive. They're willing to sit down and engage and have these conversations. And the student counselors are really doing a wonderful job of, you know, just meeting them wherever they're at, whatever they're willing to talk about, and helping them in any way that they can. Some people have come, you know, this has been in place for a very short amount of time, but we've already had some people who've come like two weeks in a row and have met with people two weeks in a row. So we're really happy about this. This is something that you've funded going forward, once the grant's over, so it will continue. Second exciting piece of news is we're going mobile. That's why I have a picture of a van here. We have what I think is the oldest van in the city fleet, but we're excited to have it. One of the places where we've been doing Community Court Deacon's Closet at Grace Commons Church is going to come to an end in the middle of May, because they're doing a huge renovation. And so this is going to be a way for us to be able to continue to deliver those services. But besides being able to do it at a site near Deacon's Closet, it's going to allow us to start going to another site. We're going to go to the Harvest of Hope Food Pantry, beginning in late April, which is on East Pearl, so that may help us reach a different population of folks. And so we're really excited about this, and this may be something that we can then expand on even further. I don't know where the Day Center will ultimately be sited, but, you know, obviously, there will be some synergies there. So really happy about that. And then finally, we're hoping to, we have an RF, not an RFP, but something like that out. We're hoping to contract with somebody to do an interim assessment of the community court. Will officially be three years at the end of September. A lot of programs wait till they've been in place a lot longer to do an evaluation. We're not going to do a formal program evaluation, I want to make that clear, but just to have that sort of lens from somebody who hopefully is an academic and has experience with problem-solving courts and give us some early feedback on how we're doing, we think would be really beneficial. All right, next slide. So I'm going to talk briefly about this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Jim. As you know, much of the work that is done by our homeless navigators is done with sort of the end goal of housing, and we know that that's, for some people, that's kind of a longer-range goal. But this is data that I compiled for a presentation that I was part of at the Boulder Chamber in late January, and I think I shared that with you in table form, but I wanted to convert that to a graph to explain it maybe a little bit more quickly, but if you, or more easily. The bar on the left, that represents the total number of Boulder Municipal Court and state court cases for seven individuals. So 978 cases among these seven individuals before they went into housing. After housing, six cases among these seven individuals. So for people who are unhoused, being housed basically stops them committing crimes. And whether you are looking at the people who have between 100 and 264 cases, or any smaller number of cases, the people who've been housed, very, very similar results. And, but that doesn't really tell you as much as we would like you to know, and that's why I brought Jim with me. I want him to tell you a few individual stories. And I'm going to have him start with a person who's actually not in a house in Boulder, but they are no longer on the streets either. And this person is the one at the courthouse where I run into another judge from county court or whatever, and they go, "What do we do about X?" And that's who Jim's going to talk about.
Happy this one.
Yes.
I have known... I've known this individual about 20 years. He's lived in Boulder that entire time. He's not new to our community by any means. I'm sure that Officer Equo would be, he would recognize him instantly were he to see him. He is incredibly difficult to serve. He commits crimes. He lives on the street, he commits crimes, and any time that we get to the point that we can put him into a house, he tries to slip away, he self-sabotages, he can't deal with it. He's been demoralized before when someone has said, "Hey, we've got housing for you," and then it turned out that we did not, actually. It takes an incredible amount of people, a whole long time, to get someone like that who's been in our community. He is our community member. He's not from somewhere else. So this individual, we have tried to get him housed before. We were successful at one point getting him housed in Denver. We took him down to his housing meeting, he was getting his keys. He never lived outside of Boulder. He beat our housing coordinator back to Boulder, because he simply couldn't live at the apartment that they were giving him in Denver. Over the years, we have made many attempts to bring him indoors, and it is, it's almost a resignation on his part, that he has decided, like, "You guys, I appreciate what you're doing for me, but I'm going to die out here." I run into him at a coffee shop, I'm like, "Dude, get in my truck right now, let's go make this happen." Anyway, recently, at his latest stint at the Boulder County Jail, a number of us partnered together. The mental health worker at the jail, BHAP, which is Behavior, I'm sorry, Behavioral Health and Programming at the Jail, our city attorney's office, under Sandra, Chris Reynolds is our lead prosecutor. They were able to work with a district attorney on the case to get an appropriate disposition on his state court case, so that we could release him from custody into the custody of a different, two Boulder PD officers who drove him down to Fort Lyon, which is a multi-year residential program down in southeast Colorado. It's the first time that he's lived indoors, 20 years maybe, other than the jail. Excuse me.
And I just want to add that with him, we managed, in a very, one point of time where he was just a little bit more engaged than most, to get him an ID. We actually got him to go with us, our navigator, to the DMV to get his ID, which made this placement possible. He wouldn't have been able to go to Fort Lyon without that ID.
And for many of our folks, that's our strategy, is on those days or in those times, when we do, when we have won the conversation, we try and get an appointment scheduled, whether that's for social security card or to go get his med record from the hospital. You know, one of the benefits of knowing him for 20 years is, he recognizes me, he trusts me. One of the terrible things, knowing him for 20 years, is to see his physical diminishment on the streets for that long. It kills people way too young. And by the way, he's in one of those categories. He has over 111 muni court cases, and he has over 70 state court cases. Him not being on the streets, besides it being super humane, means a lot less bikes are going to be stolen. Want to talk about another woman who, also a long-term resident of our community, and has been repeatedly victimized in our community, has suffered brutal assaults. She has been housed, but it takes an army to keep this woman in housing. She's a very social person. And so we had attempted housing at one location, but it was, again, it was too far out. It was not in her community. She was like, "Why are you guys shipping me away?" She did not last long at that housing situation. Also, though, because of where it was, we didn't have the support or resources available to be able to go and drop in on her. "How are you doing? What do you need?" We did manage to find a separate housing location, also not the right one, but now, since December, she's been in a new housing situation. The difference now is, even though she doesn't like it as much, it's in Longmont. We have a lot more people and resources able to check in on her. We have had Devon Kissick-Kelly, who's our deputy court administrator, Devon has checked in on her. Numerous Boulder PD officers, including from the HOT team, have checked in. Our homeless navigation has checked on her. Was it Be There has checked in on her. It takes an entire team. And because of the frequent check-ins, we noticed that her health was diminishing rapidly. She was depressed, she was drinking too much, not eating. It became a medical emergency. Two Boulder police officers were able to get to her in time, called an ambulance, they took her to the hospital. The EMT told our officers that it was within a day or two that she was going to die. So they really appreciated the call from them. She's currently receiving medical care in the community, and so we hope for a longer-term, more successful prognosis. But just the amount of people that had to work for that woman to be housed, again, in our community, we can't do it with a small team. It takes a big team almost every single time. I just want to highlight a couple of things. The ways and the amounts of situations that arise that get people into being unhoused are varied. It is not a monolithic population. However, the way out is always the same with housing. There are some of the folks in this community that I've known for 20 years who might be in some of those categories. One person in particular, he has over 2,500 jail nights. In 1997, when he got his first book in, at that point, if we had just bought him a condo, just the cost of his jail nights over the years is about $588,000, just for him, just his jail nights. And also, in that time, 16 some odd years, he did about half of those years at the Boulder County Jail. And it wasn't doing two and three years stints. It's 10 days at a time, 15 days at a time, 10 days at a time. That number does not include detox check-ins, emergency room check-ins. It doesn't include any of the property crimes that he might have committed along the way, any of the thefts at any of the stores. It doesn't include any of that. That's just the jail nights, just for that one person. If I gave you the number for the top five people in that timeframe, it's almost $2 million, $1.968 million just in jail nights, just from five people. Those people are housed, and they do not have any tickets now. They have zero tickets. In fact, three, three of the top seven go fishing, they go fishing together. They're fishing buddies, and they're not getting crimes, so I think it's pretty fantastic for those guys. But for all five of them, in late 90s dollars, had we bought them a condo, we would have saved almost $2 million. I just wanted to share just a couple of small stories. I'll keep my time brief, but we have people in this community who age out of a foster system, and as part of their plan, they decide that they're going to join the military. It's an appropriate plan for many kids. One of my kids, he did that, exited the foster care system, straight into the military. He was loading pallets on a C-130, and he was crushed between two pallets. He had a traumatic brain injury, and he was, again, homeless in our community without support. Another one was a combat vet. Another one was a combat veteran, and he was discharged from the VA in Aurora because his PTSD was too acute for the VA to deal with. We have people who went to high school here and are in the same yearbook with the BPD officer that's now, trying to, you know, get him into a hotel. These are long-term community members. They are from here. And they all arrived unhoused in a variety of ways. A gentleman who was riding his motorcycle got into an accident, traumatic brain injury. He's no longer able to care for himself. He's homeless on the street. These are the folks that we are talking about with these multitudes of crimes that we're trying to address with housing. We are super good at getting people document-ready. We can get them their ID, their social security, their med record. What's super difficult is the off-ramp into housing. That's the resource. And then the people that can keep them in housing. The wraparound services that we have, Ms. Kissick-Kelly, Devon, Linda, everybody at our court is super creative. Devon reaches into her pocket way more often than she should, but it's because we're trying to keep the people in the housing once we actually get them there. And I think that's, I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And that's, you can go to the next slide. That's all we have for you tonight. But we're open to your questions.
Great. Well, Linda, thanks so much for that data and information, and Jim, for those powerful stories that really helps us understand the kind of the human scale and scope of some of the challenges people are experiencing. So I really appreciate that. Do we have questions for either of them? Nicole?
Thanks for letting me go first. I'm going to duck out in about ten minutes, just for a little bit. One of the questions that I had was just around the client management system, and also thank you for the wonderful presentation. Really appreciate it. Is it going to integrate with the systems the county is using? And I know there are kind of seven other regions in the area that are also using some, a different client management system. Do those talk to each other, or will they have the capacity to do that?
Thank you for that question, and it's a really good one. We don't know for sure yet which system we'll be using. One of the ones in contention is the same one that the seven county region is using, which would be very cool. That would make it very easy to talk to each other. We've talked with the county. The county has indicated that they will not share out to us, but that if we would like to have our system dump into theirs, they would be happy to receive that information. So, yes, that may happen. Very significantly for us, though, the requirement of this RFP is that our court records management system can interface with this system so that we can just import that data. And so all of the information that we have about people from their citations, you know, their demographic, and all of that other stuff, their history, that stuff will automatically dump in there. And then our vision is that the different service providers will then be able to enter their client management notes in one unified place, rather than our navigators having their notes somewhere, and BHAP having their notes somewhere, and B There having their notes somewhere, and having this all kind of collective information in one place with appropriate releases of information for sharing.
Thank you. It's going to be incredibly valuable. And one other question. I was just wondering if you, you know, have any stories about folks who kind of aren't chronically homeless, who show up in our court? I mean, do we get that as well? I think, you know, a lot of what we've heard about is sort of folks who are coming in over and over and over again.
Really good example from this Tuesday. Do you want to tell that story? This was the guy who came from, well, Miat was telling me after.
I was, I was doing, I was going to say. Yes, we service a lot of people that are not chronically homeless. Half of my case rolls are actually CU students. So there are a variety of people that we serve. But we also occasionally get the one-time, just traveling through, unhoused traveler who shows up for community court and is serviced at that particular time.
Yeah. What your question raises for me, though, is a very poignant story that we had this week. And it was somebody who was there on a camping citation, first case ever in our court, and our navigator met with him. And this was somebody who'd been living in Douglas County with his fiance and two young children, and he'd been asked to leave the apartment because the children were noisy and disruptive. So fiance in Kansas City, and kids go back to Kansas City to live with the grandma. He makes his way to Boulder, gets a job at McDonald's working the night shift because there's an additional salary for doing that. But you can't stay at the shelter if you're working the night shift. So he was, he's been doing that for two months. He's already been sending money back to Kansas City to help support. He's almost saved up five thousand dollars to get his car fixed, and he's almost saved up enough money to get an apartment on his own. He didn't ever, he didn't even know about things like rapid rehousing and some of those options that might have been available to him. So what we did, what our navigator did with him on Tuesday was he helped him apply at one of the apartment complexes in town. But he's practically doing this on his own. He didn't need a lot of navigation. But that's an example of somebody who was not too long ago housed, fell on this particular circumstance, and is now making his way back.
Thank you. So it sounds like it's not just the chronic, chronically homeless folks that you all are seeing.
That's right.
There as well. Yeah, thank you for that. And I apologize, colleagues, I'm going to step out for a little bit to celebrate Monday, Thursday, but I will be back.
See you back again soon, Nicole. Tara, you've got a question?
I do. I have a few questions, actually. First of all, Judge Cook, can you tell us what are Class I, II, and III felon, can you tell us what those are, the offenses, Class I, II, and III? And which of those you are responsible for?
So I'm not responsible for any Class I or II misdemeanors. Those are county court charges, and so the county court judges address those. However, the Boulder Municipal Code has ordinance violations that are approximate equivalents of those charges. And they typically fall into the category of crimes against persons, like third-degree assault and harassment, weapons violations, and things like, I don't think there's any kind of a propane tank at the state level, but there are fire violations that are the equivalent of Class II misdemeanors. And then finally, resisting and obstructing. Those are kind of the big categories of municipal ordinance violations that approximate those Class I and Class II misdemeanors in the state court.
Okay, so you're responsible for those, or you're not responsible?
I am. If they're filed in our court, I'm responsible for them.
Okay. Do you feel like just walk, let's just take propane tanks. Is that you, or is that, is that the state?
Propane, propane tanks is us.
Okay. So walk us through what happens to somebody who you, who's been arrested, let's say, with a propane tank.
Well, they usually aren't arrested. They're given a summons.
Okay.
And most of, I have, I have to be honest with you, I've seen very few of those violations. But they would come to court, and the prosecutor would evaluate them and make a recommendation about what would happen in that case, and then we would act accordingly. I don't have any one particular propane tank case that stands out for me. Part of the thing that makes it, I actually, because I knew you were interested in propane tanks especially, I tried to go back and even look at our filings on that. And because it's the same ordinance that prohibits tents and nets, I really can't even give you numbers on that, because I would have to manually look at the ticket in each case to see whether the citation was for tents or for propane tanks. So, you know, with a lot of digging, we could come up with more information for you about that and what particular outcomes happened in those cases, but it's not easy to get at. It requires looking up every single case.
Okay. So what about trespass? That's under you, or certain types of trespass is under you?
Certain types of trespass are under us, yes.
Okay, like what types?
So, well, so low-level trespasses, that would not be felony trespasses, like, so going into, generally going into somebody's home is a felony trespass. But a trespass where somebody is asked to leave a business and doesn't leave, that would be in our court. There's a form of trespass that's being on public lands when you're not supposed to be there, like when the parks are closed. Those are our cases.
So somebody that doesn't leave a business, how are we doing with that? Do we have a lot of those cases?
So, on and off, as a general rule, filings have been on a downward trend over the last few years, but when we get those, we have different options. But one of the options, and this hasn't been used a lot in recent history, and I think it's partly because we just haven't seen that many of these cases, or because the businesses have already been proactive. But one of the things that can be helpful in these cases is if individuals are issued no trespass orders, or affidavits of trespass, or at CU, they call them exclusion orders. So like, a really good tool in those cases is for people to be told, "You can't come back here for a specified period of time." And then if they're told that, and they come back, that'll be a trespass. So, you know, in my meetings with people like Chip and John Taylor at the Chamber, what initially, I don't think the business owners were super aware of this option, but I think in recent, in the last year or so, they've become quite aware, and so a lot of them are doing a much better job of issuing those affidavits of trespass, which then allows the police, when they're called in those situations, to write the citation and have the case come into our court.
What about menacing? Is that you?
Misdemeanor menacing would be us. So if somebody's menacing verbally without using a weapon, that would, it's, in our court, it's called threatening bodily injury, but it's the same as misdemeanor menacing.
Okay. So if you had a dream, Judge Cook, as to how to make things better, what would you like? How's that?
Do you want to narrow that question at all?
Okay.
I would, I would like a house for all of these unhoused people, because I don't think that these violations would be occurring if they were housed. But I'm sure that's, I think you're probably asking something narrower than that.
No, actually, that's a great answer, and I, hearing your presentation, I feel like we need to double down and find housing for people. So that is true. But I was looking for, you're right, I was looking for something different, although I did appreciate that answer, is what can help bring more order to the city? So let's say that we have trespassing. Well, you did something about that with the businesses, because, you know, a lot of people were scared that worked in the businesses, so this is really helpful. But what would help in misdemeanor menacing, or in, for instance, propane tanks, which are dangerous because they can create fire? What would help?
I think a citation is always helpful, to be honest, because a citation gives us an opportunity to engage with somebody who may be service-resistant and needs some incentive to engage. And it also gives us the opportunity, as appropriate, to give them a consequence that's commensurate with the crime that they committed. So citations are helpful.
Okay, so citations are helpful. Okay, that's good to know. And I just wanted to thank you for answering all my questions. I think it's helpful to the community to know what you're in charge of, what you're not in charge of. And so thanks for that. I appreciate it and all you do.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tara.
Thanks, Judge Cook. It's always fascinating to hear what you do and what your team does. So thanks so much for coming, seeing us at once a quarter. I guess I wanted to follow up on the line of questions that Tara started. It sounds like there are perhaps some people in the community who, if they get into our system, you or the navigators can help them get services, whether there's mental health services, or maybe substance abuse treatment, or other services, maybe even housing, where you can help them get into a system that might help them far beyond whatever the criminal matter happens to be. Is that a fair, do I understand that right?
That's absolutely right.
Okay. You mentioned citations are down, and maybe I'll ask the chief about that when she makes her presentation. But just with respect to the citations you do get, I guess I was a little troubled and educated, but also troubled by some of the things you mentioned on one of your earlier slides about the personal recognizance bond. So I want to kind of understand how that works. And so if someone's issued a citation, but you don't, they don't, they're not going to maybe appear in front of you because they're not arrested, or they're going to be out on a PR bond, or maybe the police don't even bother to arrest them. I'm just wondering how they get into the system now, if they're not appearing in front of you, either because they're not arrested, or you have to immediately release them. I get the fact there may ultimately be a trial on their citation, or maybe there won't be because they simply didn't show up. I'm just trying to figure out how, how to help those people get into the system and connect it to your navigators and other people that will address their broader issues.
So I, let me see if I'm understanding your question correctly. I'm thinking you're asking kind of about the bonding.
Yeah, I guess I kind of am. I think, you know, so for example, a lot of these crimes that you just ran through with Tara, I think they're typically ninety days or less. Is that a fair assumption?
That's correct.
Okay. And the PR bond cutoff is at six months. Is that right?
Correct.
In other words, if the theoretical penalty is less than six months, then they're typically qualified for a PR bond. So if some of these things had a higher penalty, not that you would necessarily oppose it, but I'm just trying to deal with the state law. If they had a higher penalty, would that perhaps give you and the navigators an opportunity to bring them into the system, because you'd have some interaction with them for a few days?
So what that would permit is for any municipal ordinance violation that is equivalent to a state one or two misdemeanors. So that does not include camping, for instance, but it would include those crimes against persons, weapons offenses, quite a few fire-related offenses. If our maximum penalty was, say, one hundred and eighty-five days, that gets you past the six-month mark, then we would have broader discretion on our, on a pre-trial basis, to hold them in custody at the jail, rather than releasing them on a personal recognizance bond. At that point, we would have the option of imposing a cash surety bond. Anybody can get out if they can post the cash or surety bond, right? But many of these people are not in a position to be able to do that financially. Is that beneficial, I guess is kind of implicit in your question? We have seen a higher level of stabilization, if you will, when people are in custody for a slightly prolonged period of time, say, five or ten days, as opposed to right now, they have to see a judge within forty-eight hours. So, and if they're required to have a personal recognizance bond, then they're spending no more than forty-eight hours in custody before they're getting out on their PR bond. And then if they don't show up for court at their next court date, which happens pretty frequently for this group of people, then you're issuing another warrant, and the cycle happens again. And eventually, they probably get enough days in jail, as Jim talked about. It's short periods of time that they're finally pleading guilty, and they're getting credit for the time they've spent in there. But those two days here, and two days there, and two days there, doesn't give you the same degree of ability to intervene in a more robust way.
Do you think that the period of opportunity to intervene is measured in five or ten days, or what do you think the right?
I think it's pretty variable. For some people, it is that small amount of time. You know, for other people, it's probably longer. The people who are incredibly mentally ill and arrive at the jail needing significant mental health intervention, including being put back onto their medications and reaching therapeutic levels, that's obviously a longer period of time.
Sure. But that potentially is a benefit for that person with that mental illness?
Yes.
And presumably, if they're in jail for a few days, that they're going to be sober during that time, or sober up?
One would presume so.
One would presume so. Okay, thanks. Sandra, just a quick question for you, and I know this is entirely a policy question for councils. I'm not asking away on that. But I mean, is it theoretically possible, if it was the will of council, to change the penalty, the maximum penalty, for some of these crimes that go to the municipal court to the one hundred eighty-five days, or something slightly longer than six months, so that these folks can have access to the services that Judge Cook, is that, that's possible from a legal standpoint?
It is a possible. I think it would need to be the will of council, and we currently have maximum ninety days. And so obviously, that would be a big shift, but it could be an additional tool available to us to try to help folks. But we'd have to look into it more and see. It would be good to do the research and see whether the cost of doing so, you know, reaps the right rewards.
Yeah, and I don't want to put you on the spot. I know there's a lot of research. I just wanted to ask the question just theoretically. So that's something for different discussion, but I wanted to at least tee it up. So that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. I got Mark and Tara again. And just keep in mind, folks, we have another update from BPT coming after this, so.
Just a quick question. The charts that you showed at the beginning
The, the charts that you showed at the beginning of the presentation showing the, the reduction in crimes committed by high utilizers when they're successfully housed is very compelling. And we, we've always had that view of, you know, housing first in this town. But we've also experienced, um, many instances where the people we're trying to house are not being good neighbors to the people they are living with in the affordable housing communities in which we place them. And that has created a set of difficulties all its own. How do you reconcile the two? And there's nobody questioning the, the benefits of housing, but not everybody can be successful in housing. And we've found that out. And we've, um, you know, I, I know it's been the case with, with some of the Boulder Housing Partners communities. And they have residents who are, who get up in arms because the, the people they are now being placed with are running chop shops and, and, you know, drug centers and making their life difficult. So how do we reconcile those, those two things? The benefits of placing people, high utilizers in housing, and the difficulties of placing high utilizers in housing?
Right, so, um, I, I appreciate you asking that because I can understand how that would appear to be a disconnect. The kinds of people that you're talking about, and I know some of them by name, are on, not on this list because they didn't stay in housing long enough to make it onto this list. But what the key is for people to be successful in housing is also not only placing people in housing, but having housing retention strategies and supports. And for a long time in this community, we've not had that. We do have, um, I know, you know, from HHS, you have the building home team coming on board really, really soon. And those are pure mentors that will help with that. But we've also recognized that until that team is in place, what we have done on an ad hoc basis is just put together those wraparound services. So it's not uncommon, for the individual that Jim was talking about, that, um, uh, in, in, that was housed in Longmont, we had, um, at least three days a week, somebody was checking on, on her. And one day it was BHAP, and one day it was the Court Navigator, and one day it might have been Focus, or it might have been the Hot Team, or whatever. And so, um, we had, we actually have a weekly team that's meeting, and they're doing case planning, not only for people who are on the path to housing and might be going into housing, but also for the people who are now housed, or people who are in transitional housing with our, um, with those dollars, and trying to support them so that they're successful in those placements. And that's not something we did, um, out of the box with housing. But it's something we're doing better now on a, on an ad hoc basis. And I think if, I can't say for sure what would have happened with those individuals that quickly did not succeed, um, and whether or not that would have made a difference for them. But I have to imagine that for some of them, if they'd had that, that would have been helpful. Not, you know, it's, um, it's hard to learn to live in community again with people that don't look like the community that you were living with you when you were unhoused. And so there's some learning that has to happen there, and we need to do a good job of helping them with that.
I'll just add too, Mayor, if I may. I'd hold on, council member, to that question at the risk of incurring the ire of our HHS directors in the audience today. That's a really good question to be asking next week when we have a study session really devoted to homelessness services, because it is, uh, an interesting nexus. It is, um, why we are geared towards housing first. But housing for, first does, I think, to be truly successful, requires some supports. And those are some supports that we're adding to it, so.
We'll keep that question in mind.
Thanks Mark. Tara, did you have something else?
Real quick, I know you want a real quick errand. Bicycle theft. Can you tell me, Judge Cook, when, let's say somebody steals an $800 bicycle, is that your, is that what you would take care of?
No, we don't have a theft ordinance.
Okay, so you don't do thefts at all?
That's correct.
Go on, Erin, so quick.
So quick, all right. Well, seeing no other hands, unless, Mark, is that an old hand there? I said, sorry, not old, a previous hand. Then we can, thank you so much, Jim and Linda, for your presentation and for your answers. Really appreciate it. And we'll, thank you. And we'll ask our Boulder Police Department representatives to come on up. I think I see Chief Harold and Deputy Chief Redford in the room.
We don't want to kill the city manager with a falling monitor. That would be, that would be bad. Stephen will take a monitor for you.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, Mayor Protem Walek. It's good to be here this evening. We are going to stick to the same framework that we had last time that we are in front of you. If you'd go to the next slide, please. Uh, the agenda will be pretty much the same agenda that we had last time with just one new addition. So we're going to be looking at problem locations across the city of Boulder, review of some problem crime patterns. We're going to be looking at some pretty serious, significant incidents that we've had during the last quarter. We'll summarize that, and we'll give you plenty of time for questions. Next slide, please. Um, I just want to reorient, uh, council in the community on what we are trying to do with our crime reduction strategy. So as we're, uh, throughout the presentation tonight, as we're reviewing what Deputy Chief Redford will present tonight, um, I want council to understand, in the community to understand, um, that we'll be very focused on places. And there's very good reason for that is because places, uh, crime concentrates at places. But it's a very few number of places across the city that crime concentrates. Um, most importantly is that the majority of Boulder's geography has no crime or little calls for service. So if we can keep that in mind tonight. Uh, the Boulder Police Department has chose problem solving as its primary crime reduction strategy. There's good reason for that, too, because it's evidence-based. Um, research supports using some type of problem-solving model. Person-focused throughout this presentation, as Steve goes through this. And the reason this is so important is because we know, um, just like Judge Cook indicated, we have, uh, very few offenders committing the majority of crimes in Boulder. So that's important from a police reform perspective as well, to understand that we really do have very few people committing crime in Boulder. Um, but they are repetitive in nature. And, uh, they really cause great havoc in the community. Um, and so we need to focus on those repeat offenders, uh, in our community. Uh, we can't do any of this without the community. And so as Steve goes through this presentation, you will see heavy reliance on partnerships, collaborations, collaborations with other city departments, collaborations with businesses, collaboration with community members, um, and people that are affected by the criminal activity that we're speaking. All of this is packaged up in a stratified policing model. All of it's packaged up as an organizational, so we can run problem solving in a day-to-day operation. Um, something that most police departments do not do because policing, by nature, since the 911 systems came online in the 1960s, is, has become very reactive, um, in nature. And I am trying to get away from that reactive and get police officers to go into a more preventative stance. Next slide. The one new thing that we'll be introducing is the methodology that we have chosen, um, to look at crime. So problem solving is the strategy. It's evidence-based. But what is the methodology that the police officers are using when they look at crime? And so when we're looking at repeat crime, um, we're going to choose the SARA methodology. And you'll see this throughout Steve's presentation when he's talking about problem-solving projects. This is really important to maintain that the police are constantly in a problem-solving process. Most professions have some form of a problem-solving process. Criminology chooses the SARA model. Um, and basically, you'll see that when Steve's talking about these problem-solving projects, we'll be in each, we'll talk about what phase that we are in in each one of these, uh, projects that we're talking tonight. But scanning is basically to identify a problem that's repeat in nature. Then you go into an analysis where we look at data. We're very lucky in Boulder to have Dr. Reinhardt, uh, who actually is constantly scanning and doing analysis for us. You'll see that Steve will talk about the responses that we're doing. This is important because all of the responses that we look at are ethical, effective, and equitable. And, um, so Steve will talk a little bit about that. And then, uh, finally, the police department does a really good job on assessing what the police are, are responses. Are they working? Um, and if they're not, we go right back to the scanning and figure out what we're doing wrong. So I want the community, uh, and council to understand that this is the level of detail, um, in problem solving that we're doing on a daily basis. And I feel confident, um, after approximately a year of doing this, that we've institutionalized this in the police department. And so I'm very proud of the work that we're doing. Um, I'm going to let Steve drive this, uh, for the next several minutes, and then we'll get to questions. Steve?
Thanks Chief, and good evening, Council and Mayor Brockett. Um, next slide, please. Uh, Steve Redford, Deputy Police Chief. And I'm going to talk fast because there's a lot of information in the last quarter to go over. Um, let me know if I'm going too fast. So you might recall from the last presentation we did, uh, through stratified policing, we look, uh, initially, one of the big premises is to look at the locations in the city that have an inordinate amount of calls for service. And so when our data analyst looks at this data to see, all right, why does this place have more calls than, for example, you're going to hear us talk about a convenience store that has a huge number of calls compared to other convenience stores. And that's one of the, the successful things we've done in this program is to figure out why and then try to get to the root of that issue. So I'm going to take you through some problem locations. I'm going to talk about, uh, three of them, and then I'm going to talk about a new location we've just started. Next slide, please. So you've heard, uh, more than once from us about the Circle K over on Canyon. And when we started this program, we realized that the Circle K had, uh, hundreds more calls for service than the other convenience stores in the city. Um, we're at a point now in the SARA model where we are at the response phase. We've, we think we have a good grasp of why that the location has a, a lot of calls for service. And we've done a lot of work. Um, the great thing with this location is we have a very cooperative management team. That's not always the case. And so we've had a lot of great collaboration with the regional manager, uh, local manager, and then a lot of the, uh, the corporate partners there. And so while calls are, are trending downward, where they're not quite where we want to see them. Um, one of the things, a few things we've done with management since we've, uh, last presented to you, council, was, uh, a couple of things such as, uh, the store now locks their single beer cans. They still sell single beer cans, but what we were seeing before is a lot of shoplifts. Uh, so now if someone wants to buy a single beer, they have to, the clerk has to unlock, uh, the cooler. Uh, they now lock the restroom. It's still accessible, but you have to get a key from the clerk. Uh, they were having a lot of issues in the restroom. And so small things like that, um, we're seeing, uh, calls for service go down. Um, one thing we noticed, and you'll see in a moment, um, when we started this program and we really met with the, the management, uh, they, they deemed that they, some of their business practices were probably conducive to some of these calls. They made changes with staff. And one of the things we did is train the staff. And so once we did that, we saw actually some calls increase uh, because staff was actually calling, whereas before, they would let things fester till they got to a really serious point. A couple of things, improving lighting, improving cameras, including, um, things like security. And then we provided training for employees. Um, and, and the company actually is providing a pay incentive now to attract employees that want to work overnight. They were actually closing at night because they couldn't find people that wanted to work there. Next, next slide, please. Um, happy to report calls are down. Um, if you see, um, on this slide, on the far right, uh, of the graph, you'll see February, we had 12 calls for service. And that is really remarkable considering, um, in 2021, some months, we were seeing 50 calls for service at the location. A couple of the things on the left, you'll see, we had a couple thefts, trespassing, but overall, no serious crime. Um, you'll hear me talk about a significant incident that began at the Circle K. But overall, um, we're not where we want to be yet on calls, but we're, we're trending in the right direction. Next slide, please. So, uh, this is new, uh, to the program since we last presented to you. And we have taken on the library as a, uh, problem location. Um, I'll tell you, tell you why. And the big, um, the exciting news as to why we're able to focus on the library now is because we had such success with the Table Mesa RTD Park and Ride that we've actually removed that as a problem location. And I'll talk about that in a minute. A year into this program, and we are comfortable now with our staff, our commanders, our sergeants, our officers, where, uh, we would have not taken the library on as a project right away with this program because of the complexities there. But I think we're in a good place now that we know this, this program. So we've assigned a commander and two sergeants to specifically, um, deal with the library. And we've had great collaboration with the staff. Um, our officers now, on a daily basis, several times a day, are parking, getting out of their car, walking through the library, getting a cup of coffee at the cafe there, and having a lot of pleasant interactions. We all know some of the issues surrounding the restrooms and things. So our Drug Task Force has been out there to provide employee training on recognition of hazardous, uh, situations. Um, and they've also, the Drug Task Force has done some investigating into some of the nexus to some of the drug, um, related crimes that we saw there. I'm hearing really good feedback from the library director and the staff on the increased presence from the police department. Next slide, please. So calls are actually down at the library, um, significantly. If you look back to August of last year, 51 calls for service there. Um, one of the problems that we've seen here is the library is an icon there. And, uh, what Dr. Reinhardt has had to do is to kind of parse out what calls are actually at the library in the parking lot, and what calls may be on the creek path and getting called in as a library. So that's been a challenge as we're assessing this, this problem. Um, the, the nature of the calls you see on the left are, uh, all over the board. Uh, some disturbances, trespassing. Uh, the library had some issues with their security company, and they've hired a new security company. And we're working with them, uh, and training the security company on when is appropriate to call the police, those kinds of things. So we're hoping that the presence there will also, um, help reduce calls for service. Next slide, please. So the other location, I believe we had just started the assessment phase on this, or the scanning phase when, uh, we presented last quarter, is the Millennium Hotel. It was at the top of our, one of the top locations in the city for calls. And when we compared it to other motels, uh, it was, the other motels had very minimal calls compared to the Millennium. Another, uh, really nice thing with the Millennium is extremely cooperative, uh, management. Um, the manager there was brought in specifically by the company. Uh, he goes around the country and deals with locations that are experiencing issues. And so, uh, from day one, it's been great. A lot of collaboration. Um, we did a crime prevention assessment, and we determined a, a couple of things, such as, uh, they could not account for their key cards to access the building 24/7. There was a few of them, more than a few out in the community. Uh, they've deactivated those. We worked, uh, to help them with things such as not being able to prop open a door, uh, and allow people to come and go. And so, um, the hotels have changed some policies with our recommendations on, uh, just some of their renting practices and things. Um, there was a, uh, several month period where there was transitional housing in the Millennium. Um, and we're happy to say that we were able to look at that data. And really, the transitional housing did not, uh, cause an increase in police calls. Um, what we're seeing on some of the issues is just, uh, traditional hotel guests that come here for whatever reason, and some of the problems have just been, uh, some of the folks, uh, here. Uh, we're being told that the Millennium will close in the fall, about November. And so we're, we're going to work with them to that point to ensure that, uh, they continue to have a decline in crime. Uh, they're sold out on a couple of the upcoming weekends where things are happening in town. Next slide, please. I won't spend much on this because I've already talked about some of this. Uh, as you, the reason that we, this came to our attention was last summer, just the spike in, in calls. And then the end of last year, a large spike. And so, uh, we are trending downward and we are, uh, it's really a wide range of calls. Some things like fire alarms, medical calls, um, are not of, of major concern. And, and so I think we're heading in the right direction. We'll keep you posted on the progress there. Next slide, please. Uh, I mentioned Table Mesa Park and Ride. I feel like this is a great success story for this program. It was the first, uh, problem location that we tackled. Um, I know that council had previous questions about, um, the location. I know that, uh, at least one council member had, uh, was victimized their vehicle there. And so we heard it loud and clear from the community about, um, this location. And so initially, um, it was slow, but we now have an incredible partnership with RTD. We had a lot of meetings, a lot of collaboration. Uh, the new police chief with RTD has started forming regional, uh, police groups within RTD. Uh, they just hired a commander from out of state who lives in Boulder, and he's the regional RTD police commander. Um, I met him for breakfast the other morning. He's going to come to some of our meetings. And so RTD plans to bring more officers, specifically focused to this area. Um, and they've been great. If you see the camera in the lower left on the picture, that's a brand-new camera. When we started this, their cameras were horrendous, uh, could barely make out any, um, anything. And quite frankly, people who come here to commit crimes, they notice those things. And so, um, things like the signage, all of those things are new. Another thing that we've done, and it's successfully been implemented now on the top couple floors of the park and, uh, park and ride, is long-term parking. And it allows RTD and us to focus on those areas, short-term day parking on the lower levels. And, uh, it, it helps people, uh, big problem there we've seen is it could be a week before somebody realizes their car has been, uh, broken into or stolen. And so that's been good. Um, and I'll talk about another thing on another, uh, upcoming slide that we've had success with there. So we have moved this into the assessment phase, which means, uh, it's off our problem location. So we have moved this into the assessment phase, which means it's off our problem location list, and we're going to continue to monitor it going forward to make sure problems don't continue. Next slide. As you can see in this slide, we've only had five and seven calls in January and February location, none of which, only one in the last month was an actual criminal offense of a theft. You know, the top three calls were, were crashes, and so that's good. I mean, not the crashes, but the fact that we're not having a lot of crime there, we're really happy about that, and we're going to continue to work with RTD going forward. Next slide, please. We have two other properties that we started out as problem locations that are, continue just to be monitored. One is Depot Square. We talked a lot about that property, and that, that had a lot of impact there for the residents. We're seeing five, three to five calls a month there, and that is completely normal activity for any apartment complex. Continue to monitor that, but good successes there as well. Next slide, please. So we are fortunate, as I mentioned last quarter, when we look at our top, top crimes for the city of Boulder, none of them are persons crimes. We don't have the issues that other cities have where we're trying to, in this program, address violent crime. All crime is problematic, and for people who are burglarized and their cars are stolen, we understand that's a significant impact, so I'm not diminishing that, but the three crimes we're focusing on still are property crimes. Next slide, please. So burglary, we are seeing an uptick in burglary. It is still trending downward overall, but I want to give you some context on this. And so while from January to February looks like a large jump, if you look at the numbers on the left axis, it's, we're really only talking about an increase in about 10 burglaries. What we've seen in the last two to three months is a large uptick in burglaries of storage units, and I'm not talking the, where you go rent a storage unit at public storage. I'm talking underground apartment complex, storage cages, for lack of a better term. And we've had a couple different groups of thieves that are specifically targeting those locations, stealing bikes. Sometimes the storage cages themselves are not well-constructed, they're chain-linked, and not well-made and easily defeated. We have an ongoing education campaign with our Community Resource Officer, Ms. Trujillo, to help educate these different apartment complexes on better ways to prevent those. We are still seeing that, for example, the Peloton Building over on Arapahoe and 33rd saw a large number of storage unit burglaries in a week. Our overnight officers made it a point to get out on foot. They made contact with some people acting suspicious in the garage, and they also hired off-duty officers temporarily. Our crime there has ceased, knock on wood, but a lot of that, too, is education in the community about not, don't leave valuable things in plain view in these locations. Next slide. So talking about burglaries, and there's a lot on this slide, I'm going to quickly kind of touch on it. I want to just give you the same caveat I did last time, is burglary encompasses a large number of potential circumstances. It's not always someone breaking into a home. We're still seeing a large number of the storage locker burglaries, and what we're seeing is still some burglaries of unlocked homes and some construction site burglaries. So there's, there's a 48 burglaries in the last month. We have made seven arrests in those burglaries, which is good, and really, what we're seeing is again, a small number of people committing a decent number of these burglaries. What we do monitor with our crime analysts is these clusters, is where burglaries are occurring, and that allows us to kind of focus on enforcement as well as being just smarter about how we're focusing on disrupting some of these pattern, of pattern crimes. Next slide, please. Moving on to auto theft or motor vehicle theft, I'm very happy to report, we are trending down compared to 2022, 27% so far, and we are down from 2020, 20, about 14% average. Our data, what we're seeing from our regional cities is a lot of cities are still seeing a double-digit increase in motor vehicle theft. Unfortunately, Colorado is still number one in the United States for car theft, so for us to be trending in the way we are is, is, I think, a tribute to the work that our officers are doing out there every day. We can't pursue stolen cars, and rightfully so, it's dangerous to do so, so we've gotten smart by using data, some intel, and also non-traditional tactics in making some arrests for people behind the wheel. Couple more points on that, on the next slide. We are seeing, again, looking at patterns in areas. You can see right in the middle of the map, there's a lot of dots, and what we've really been looking at is the green ones, which is where stolen cars are being recovered. What that typically means to us, if we're seeing a lot of stolen cars recovered in a spot, there's a good chance an auto thief may live in that area. So we've started looking where cars are being recovered, and we've had a lot of good success in actually putting surveillance and other things out there where we can hopefully catch the prolific auto thieves. Of interest here, some of the things we're seeing since we've really started tracking this data, and we had 11 vehicles stolen in Boulder we recovered outside of Boulder. And what we're seeing is we're recovering, we recovered in the last month, six vehicles coming into Boulder from Denver, Aurora, and other spots. We're really trying to impact the thieves that are coming to Boulder specifically to target our community, and we have a 78% overall recovery rate for stolen cars this year to date. It's always of interest, so we put it on there, the top three stolen cars in the last month, Honda Civic, Subaru Legacy, and six trailers, which is interesting because a lot of times those, those trailers are coming from construction sites, and they have valuable construction equipment, so that's another prevention thing we're working on with construction sites. Next slide. So last of our pattern problem crimes is theft from motor vehicle. Unfortunately, we are trending up, and this is a few things. It's theft of license plates, theft of catalytic converters, and theft of any parts off of a vehicle. It's not, it's consistent with regional and national trends on catalytic converter and other things. We're working diligently to bring these down. Our numbers are still significantly lower per capita, however, we're not, we're not happy with these results, and we're focusing to make some changes here. What we have seen, though, of note, and a lot of these are crimes that are preventable, we're continuing to see people leave valuables in plain sight in vehicles where it's very easy for somebody to smash the window, or even more so unlock a car or open a door on an unlocked car. A couple times in the last week, we've had firearms stolen out of unlocked vehicles. Someone's keeping a gun in a glove box, so a big piece of this is community education as well. We're continuing our social media push about locking cars. When you go into the gym, don't leave your briefcase sitting on the seat in plain view. Thieves will still find ways to get in your car, however, sometimes we're seeing it where the people are making it easy for them to find a target. So a big, a big education piece on those. Next slide. So we did, we have had 36 thefts from motor vehicle last month, and we had three distinct clusters. A couple of them, like if you're looking at 10th and University, what we're seeing, and we've had some, some education with CU and new students that might be leaving a place to come to college here that they're used to being able to leave things in their car where it's not getting stolen, so education there as well. And then we're seeing things, debit cards, clothing, sports, tools and electronics, and I mention this every time we present, mentioned it last time with bicycles. Folks do not, are not diligent about keeping serial numbers on things. As you sit here, if your iPad was stolen out of your car, would you have the serial number? A lot of the times, the answer is no. We recommend people take a picture of it, save that, and if your item is stolen, then we can enter it in the, the National Crime Computer as a stolen item. It makes it a lot easier for when we contact somebody with items that we can confirm they're stolen. So a few things on there. One thing we're going to look at, and we are looking at, RTD is very, has been creative with this, it's a report card. They actually will go to their parking lots and facilities and, and look at your car. They're not entering your car or doing anything like that, but they're looking to see, is there anything in plain view? Are there things, is your car unlocked? And they will actually leave this on your vehicle saying, hey, you passed our random inspection, and so we're exploring doing something similar, kind of just to say, hey, the good guys were here to do this. Luckily, you know, it wasn't somebody intended to do you harm, but you may think about removing these items. Next slide. One more thing on here, just catalytic converters. We've had 18 in the last month. We're still seeing the same sorts of vehicles targeted, Priuses, pickup trucks, Toyotas especially, and some Honda products. One of the things we're doing differently is we're working with the Department of Motor Vehicle, and we're figuring out some ways where we can do community outreach to people who have the vehicles that may be likely targets to have catalytic converters stolen. They're hard to track, at least in the last month, as you see on the, on the screen, there's no discernible patterns. However, a lot of them are off main roads. People may come into town, get off the highway, and it's usually overnight hours. So we encourage people, when they hear things at night, sawing noises, anybody suspicious, please call us, we'll get out there quick. Next slide, please. The last thing on catalytic converters, I'm happy to report, we had just started this last presentation, in the last quarter, we have handed out 550 catalytic converter etching kits. People have come into the police department. Ms. Trujillo, Officer Trujillo provides them with the kit, and when they come in and they drive one of the top stolen vehicles, we're also providing them with a steering wheel club or anti-theft device that we've been able to, to, to give them. So continuing on that as well. Next slide. We're almost done. Obviously, we want to highlight a few significant incidents because while we're doing all of this work to try to prevent crime and determine who's committing crime, we're continuing to respond daily to significant events. We've had quite a few in the last quarter, but I'm going to highlight just a few, just so you can see some of the work that we're doing. Next slide, please. This case, you may have seen, it made international news. It, it read something almost out of a, a movie, and it, it came early to our attention. We had a, a truck that was parked at a motel with high-end art. Most of the art had already been purchased and was on the way to the owner, and someone was able to break into that truck and stole $400,000 worth of art. We were able to make an arrest in this, on this case very quickly, within a week, and that was because of a relationship that one of our patrol officers had fostered with a community member that happened to be in Lakewood in a motel room where this thief had the art, guns, and drugs. This, this man had seen our story and called the officer, just a patrol officer, and said, hey, you may want to let your people know, I just saw your stolen art in the motel room in Lakewood. Our detectives wrote a search warrant, and with assistance of Lakewood PD, we made contact. They had stolen handguns, an AR-15 assault rifle, 1,700 fentanyl pills, a lot of meth, and as you can see, I'm not going to read them all, multiple felony charges on these individuals. So it started with art, and we were able to get a lot of guns and some drugs off the street, too. So that was a great case. Next, please. This stabbing was, you probably heard about it, made some significant news. We had a shoplifter at Barnes &amp; Noble, you know, just a low-level crime, was confronted by an employee. He stabbed the employee. Thankfully, the employee did survive, and the suspect, we, we were on scene within a minute of the call, and within under 30 minutes, we located the suspect nearby in an encampment, and we were able to charge him with first-degree assault, which is the most serious form of assault there. So that was a swift resolution, and we're happy that the manager is okay. Next slide. So we had last month, two very concerning incidents in a week, as you all are well aware. I wanted to just give a couple updates. So on the Monday morning, Millennium Hotel, two officers, one from us and one from CUPD, were driving in the area of 28th and Arapahoe, heard gunshots. Our officers quickly flooded the area, and there was a man that was firing rounds out of the fourth floor motel room actively shooting. That obviously triggered our response with SWAT, all-on-duty personnel, and we were quickly able to isolate and contain this person in the room. We were able to determine that he was alone, which was good, and then when he tried to escape the hotel, our officers were able to immediately confront him. He had two handguns on his person. This could have ended very, very differently if not for the restraint of our officers. He also had methamphetamine. We found a vehicle in the parking lot that was shot up 19 times. Were never able to determine why, there was no association with that vehicle. This guy had come to Boulder from the Denver metro area and had an extensive criminal history, so we were very happy to be able to get some serious felony charges on him. We were very lucky, no one was hurt in that incident. Next slide. The same week, two days later, early morning in a snowstorm, our, a call, call came into dispatch, and the subject on the call said, I'm at Boulder High School, I'm in the parking lot, I have an AR-15, and I'm going to head inside and start shooting people. He then, it turns out it was a recording, but we, the dispatcher heard automatic gunfire on the line. Obviously, this, everybody from the chief on down, we rushed to the scene and treated this like the real thing. We were able to determine relatively quickly, we, that our officers were in the school under three minutes, with contact teams formed, ready to go find this threat and neutralize him if he was indeed shooting in the school. We were fairly quickly able to realize, all right, this probably is unfounded, but we went through all the motions. He mentioned explosives, so we made sure it was safe to, to turn the school back over to BVSD. That was one of many calls that day. Ours unfortunately was one of the first in the metro area, and so this person, we believe, may have been overseas. The FBI is investigating that case. One thing here that came out of this incident, thankfully, it was not a real incident, and it actually was a great real-life exercise for us. Tested some things with BVSD security. We've since done some tabletops to make sure our next response is even better, and so that was a good outcome. Next slide. This was, you know, fortunately for Boulder, we don't have a lot of shootings. This shooting did happen a couple months ago. Our officers were called to the atrium building about 10 o'clock at night for a person shot. Our officers arrived and found a person that was shot in the leg. Our officers immediately put a tourniquet on the person, and because of the leg injury and the propensity for a serious arterial wound, they put the subject in a patrol car and drove them lights and siren to the hospital. They were at the hospital within two minutes, and the person was rushed into surgery, expected to make a full recovery, which is fantastic. Initially, we had some challenges with this investigation. I can't get into a lot of them, it's still early on. Happy, though, to report due to some top-notch detective work in the last two days, I believe we've gotten much closer to making an arrest in this case. We have a suspect identified. We have some other things that we're working on, I can't share, but we will hopefully share with you in the very near future that we've been able to arrest a suspect in that shooting. Next slide. As we did last time, and we talk about a lot of heavy things and all of the, some of the bad things we have experienced, and so in the last quarter, I wanted to just highlight four quick things that we've done in the community that have had great results. Upper-left slide, I will point out Chief Harold in a Wonder Woman costume that is the, the lake at Boulder. I know Councilmember Benjamin can attest how cold it was. They chipped the ice off the lake, and we did polar plunge for Special Olympics that morning. This is the third event in the last year we've done with Special Olympics. We raised $6,000, or $5,900. We were the top law enforcement fundraising team. It was actually a really fun morning after we got out of the cold water.
Can I say one thing?
I suppose.
Councilman, Councilmember Benjamin is really wicked fast in the water. I was not, and I almost froze to death, so just wanted to point that out.
All right, I'll leave that alone. The upper-right corner, I wanted to share with you, we had a very successful mass casualty exercise. We worked with a vacant building here in town in partnership with the Fire Department, and we staged a mock terrorist attack, including with some explosives to set it off. We used real patrol officers, real firefighters, and put them in the scenario. It allowed our commanders to utilize instant command. We used actors with moulages and fake injuries to really ramp up the seriousness and realistic nature of the exercise, and we, it was great. It really exposed some things we need to work on, but also really put our, our responders in that situation of a realistic event, so when the real thing happens, they're better prepared. So that was great. The lower-left corner, I know we've had questions in the past couple council meetings that we've been at, just about officer wellness, officer safety, and what we're doing to support our personnel who are out there every day dealing with bad things. We have hired a part-time employee support coordinator, and what she is doing is starting to do things for our department, and specifically our families. And so we had our first family night two weeks ago, and we had several speakers on employee mental and physical wellness. Employees were able to bring their kids, and our cadets babysat them. They watched a movie while we were able to talk about some of the challenging things in our profession. We wanted to get our families in there, and we're going to continue to do these things. We're going to do fun events, things for kids, but to really continue to foster the family environment. It's been a scary few years for our families on everything that's gone on, and we really want to, to help. If our officers are better mentally at home and better relationally at home, that's going to directly reflect on their work, so we're excited to see what's going to happen there. Lastly, last weekend, you'll see the little, the young man, DJ Daniel, he came here from Houston. It's sad because he's terminally ill with cancer. When he was in a shelter after a hurricane, he had a very positive experience with some police officers in Texas, and when he was diagnosed in, in 2018 with incurable cancer, he decided, because of that impact, he wanted to go get sworn in as many police departments as he could as a cop. impact, he wanted to go get sworn in as many police departments as he could as a cop. Working with some regional partners, I was at Aurora there, and I swore him in as an honorary Boulder police officer. And he came up and got to see all of our SWAT equipment. He was copped for a day here in Boulder, and we were the 764th department to swear him in. It's, he's an incredibly young man, incredibly inspiring, and his fight continues, and we wish him the best of luck. Last slide, next slide, please. Council, you may have seen, we've started sending you a snapshot of some of the positive appreciation we're getting from the community. We don't often hear about these stories. And so I just want to share, since January to March, we received 40 citizen letters of appreciation via email and other things. I'm not going to read all of them. We've highlighted some of those positive interactions, which we really need to continue to do. March was Women's History Month, and I, it was an opportunity for us to celebrate that we have 20% of our officers are female officers and 16% of our leadership are female. National average is 12% female for officers and 3% for leadership. And so we're part of the 30-by-30 initiative to have 30% of our staff be female by 2030. We're well above the national average. And also really cool, and we're sharing this, it wasn't in the update we sent you earlier this year, we had our first-ever female SWAT operator. She passed every test, every very challenging criteria, and she is now on the team, and we're very excited. We celebrated that in March as well. That's it. I'm glad I'm not paid by the word. That was a lot. I appreciate your attention. We'll take time for questions, and then if you can go one slide further, I just want to remind everyone, on the lower-left corner is our crime dashboard. It's incredible. It's interactive, and you can go on there and find crimes specific to your area and track trends and find info. So thank you for your time.
Thanks so much for that, Deputy Chief Redfern. That was an extraordinary amount of information, presented extremely well. Appreciate that, and thanks, Chief Harold, as well, for being here tonight and for your words. And I'll just offer a little bit of extra thank you. You know, some of those incidents that you mentioned, the significant incidents, have been very concerning for the community. A lot, create a lot of stress and fear in folks, but the department handled them as best as they could have been handled. And so just very grateful for how well you've done that and laid the fears in the community the best that possibly could be done. I'm going to call it one more significant incident, because a couple of weeks ago, there was one just a block from my house, about an individual that holed up, that broke into a house and then holed up there for a number of hours. And it took a while, but you all were able to get him out without any injuries to him or to anyone else in the neighborhood, and really appreciate the amazing work there as well. And with that, I'll turn to councilmembers for questions. I got Junie.
Thank you so much, Mayor Rackett and Deputy Chief Redfern and Chief Maris. This was a really good presentation. I enjoy hearing about some of the progresses that you've made on the different crimes in the community, and also the fact you as well in community. So thank you for sharing that with us. I just have, well, my first question is not a real question, because you mentioned three things, that when you're looking at different situations or crimes or problems you're trying to solve, you said, "Is it effective? Is it equitable?" There was a third word, and I was thinking, I didn't catch it.
Oh, it's the threes that I, I really care about, and is it equitable? Is it ethical? And is it effective? You can add a fourth E for the taxpayers that are listening. Is it efficient?
Yeah. Thank you for that. This is great. I wrote it down for myself. That's great. I did have two other questions. You mentioned the Circle K, and I know you've mentioned a few times how it's, it's a problem in our community that you are trying to resolve. And I'm wondering, do they have their own security? And, and if not, how come you are the one who's trying? Because I know sometimes these businesses do have their own security. So I'm trying to figure out, why is it, you know, you're trying to resolve that problem?
You, this is at the crux of what we're trying to do, because I don't want to actively manage the Circle K, the police department or other city resources. It's not just the police department, it's the fire department. It's all, it's all kinds of city departments that are going there almost daily. And so I don't want to be in the business of managing the Circle K. And they have resources to do this. A lot of times, at these problem locations, they are not actively managing their properties. And then we're put under extreme pressure to help them. But at some point, to your, to your question, we have to turn over the reins to them, and they have to actively manage their properties. And we give them suggestions, we help them, but at the end of the day, there will come a time where if we're not satisfied with the management practices, then we'll have to leverage the city legal team and possibly the county team to help us ensure that they're actively managing this, because it is a tremendous amount of resources for the police department to go there almost on a daily basis. And so right now, I'm happy that they're going in the right direction. They've taken really good steps. But what I, what I have seen in the last several months is they'll make tremendous amount of progress, they'll slide back, they'll make tremendous. And so at some point, you got to call it, this is now your problem. And if you can't correct it, then we have to leverage other city resources to ensure they do that. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you for that. Appreciate it. I do have one other question, and I want to also note that, acknowledge that I appreciate knowing about the Table Mesa Park and Ride and the work that you're doing there with the signage and also the cameras. Thank you for that. You mentioned you do random vehicle checks, and I was wondering, what do you mean by that?
So, great question, councilmember. So we, RTD is doing that right now, and they're doing it at their facilities, and we're thinking about adopting a similar process. And really, all it would require is an officer to go, we're going to go through a parking lot, we're going to look at your vehicle, and, oh, you, you know, you have something laying in plain view. And we're going to note that on this paper and say, "Not a good idea." You know, that kind of thing. Or, you know, just kind of, kind of do a check and say, "Yeah, your, your car looks great. There's nothing in plain view. If I were a thief, there's nothing about this that is attractive to me." Just to kind of help them think about it. Because a lot of people, you know, you don't think about it, because Boulder is, is, is safe, and it's, people aren't victimized for the most part, which is great. But it's just kind of another layer to help people think about how to not be victimized.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Mayor Rackett.
If I could add just one thing, because it is an important project. This is called the Report Card. It has been used in numerous cities, including where I come from, Cincinnati. But the cool thing about it is you can measure it. So you do it for a short period of time. In these clusters that Steve talked about, there's three that we're looking at right now. So you send crime prevention officers out. They do a quick report card. They put it on your car. We can number those report cards, and we can actually determine, did the report cards impact the thefts from the autos? So I love it, because it's evidence-based, it works, and it actually is a community education tool, and I feel like it's part of the problem-solving process as well. Does that help?
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
Thanks, Tara.
I have just one question and a few hurrahs, that I'm so happy that we saw some changes. Number one is, my only question has to do with the Nest. Is that a problem area, or are they doing better? How's it going over there? We're all, you know, it's affordable housing, and we want to make sure that the people feel safe that live there.
I could ask Dr. Reinhardt. I don't know if he's looked at the Nest specifically, but I think the best answer is, I haven't looked at the Nest data. And can I get back with you on the correct calls for service in crime at that location? I want you to know that we do meet with the management team there, and they, they, in my opinion, they're actively managing those properties. So I would love the opportunity to get back with you with the correct data and calls for service, unless, Doctor, you have that.
My name is Dr. Reinhardt. I'm the chief data analyst with Boulder Police Department. The only thing I would add, Chief Harold, is that in the last couple of months, there was one successful arrest of a repeat offender at the Nest. But aside from that, yeah, I would say we could do some research and dig into it a little bit more.
Good deal.
Well, that sounds like good news, if nothing comes to your mind. I wanted to tell you how excited I am about, well, Junie said some of the things that we were very happy about. But I would say that Depot Square, that it's doing better, is great news. And lastly, I want to comment, oh, two more things. I, if you remember David Farnin, I don't know if everybody remembers, he asked for the police, for some police officers to come and have coffee there, and I'm so glad that that happened. That was his request, and so yay. And lastly, I want to talk about the Millennium Hotel. I'm really, really glad that it wasn't, that crime was not coming from transitional housing, because that transitional housing is such an important part of our housing strategy, but also so many, a lot of people live there and really depend on that place right now for living, to live. And so it's great new, I mean, it's not great news that we have crime there, but it is great news that it wasn't transitional housing that was the issue. So that's great. That's it.
Thanks, Tara. Anything else, Bob?
Chief, Judge, I'd like to go mention that in some, some instances, the number of citations are, are down. And I don't know if that means there's fewer crimes in those categories, or if, or there's been a conscious decision by the police department to not cite people in certain instances. I'd, I'd love your view on that. And, and she specifically mentioned propane tanks. And I realize that obviously if a person's not with the tank, there's nobody to cite. But, but I know that city manager and Joe Tadich reported there was 352 confiscations over about a 12- or 13-month period. So I imagine a few of them involved people that were kind of, you know, in possession over near their tanks. But it sounds like there's been few citations on that. So I'm just wondering, as a matter of policy, is the police department issuing fewer citations for some of those crimes relating to camping, possession of tents, possession of propane tanks? Or is, is there a reduction in incidents?
Great question. I can tell you, next week, we'll have robust stats on all of this, but I can tell you, over the last three years, our officers have written, and this would be a low estimate, over 1,000 citations for illegal camping and tents. Propane tanks are challenging, because people abandon them. And so as soon as we walk up, the people say they're not ours, and we, we confiscate them. I would say that we've probably confiscated, literally by this point, close to 500 tanks. We take it seriously. When we see them, we grab them. Obviously, if the tank is in the tent, then that requires another legal hurdle for us. We'd have to get a search warrant if people don't voluntarily give us the propane tanks. I can tell you that if we have had a reduction in the last couple of years, it's due to staffing. At times, we've been down 20%. And obviously, that takes a toll on police officers' discretionary time to write citations. But it is an policy decision at my level. In fact, I'm pretty hard on the, on the police officers that, in their discretionary time, I want them out, be an active, writing citations, because some of the behavior that we see is, is very concerning, especially as it relates to community members. So, and I'll have much more information about crime that we see in the encampments next week. But i- if there is a slight reduction, it's slight, and I know the officers are out writing a lot of citations, and they have that since I've been here.
Thanks, Chief. And yeah, if you could weave that into your presentation with Kurt and others next week, just do we have some, some, some data? That would be really great.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
So, yeah, Matt, then Mark.
Appreciate the presentation, and I would say, hopefully, we can measure our crime by how few words Officer Redfern has to present to us, and that'll be our barometer. I will say, it was a pleasure doing the polar plunge with you guys. I will say that this buffalo couldn't let a ram outswim him, so that's maybe why I was a bit emboldened. But, but it was, it was actually a genuine honor, and I had a lot of fun. My, my question was sort of a little bit of piggyback around, Bob, and it was just sort of the upstream of obviously the citations of the tanks at the tents, but I'm wondering, 300-some on tanks, they're coming from somewhere. And so my question is, are these purchased? Are these stolen tanks? And so I'm just wondering if we work upstream. And, and I think, Chief, you mentioned that you'll talk about that in the 13th, so maybe that's just a primer for there. But that's just, that's where my head goes, is where we, where they're, where, how are we acquiring those tanks and from where, and what those situations involve?
Yeah, we'll definitely include that, but I can tell you, because I hear it every day when I walk into any business, we have a tremendous amount of food trucks in the city. And we have people cutting the tanks off the food trucks, even if they're in sophisticated cages, even when people are cooking. We've had tons of those instances. If you look at the convenience stores across Boulder, tanks are being kept out in cages. I have video of people that have sophisticated wagons that they're pulling down the street that they steal from convenience stores when they're closed. So, you know, 10, 15, 20 tanks at a time. And then there are people that are giving tanks out in our community, and, and that's problematic as well. So theft is a big portion of it. And then we have community members giving actually small propane tanks out that we find constantly when we do the encampment cleanups. So I can get more information on that specifically, but that is, that is another crime prevention area that we, we need to pay attention to. You know, and unfortunately, I was at Full Cycle the other day, and the owner of the bagel food truck came out, and she said, "I, you know, I continually have my propane tanks stolen off my truck, and they're, they're not, they're, they're expensive," right, "to, to cook all that food." So we're working on some crime prevention tips around that as well. I hope that's helpful.
It is, it is. I appreciate that. My other question centers kind of around staffing. I sort of reflect on my ride-along with Sergeant Marquez. And that night, from what I recall, staff, it was at minimum staffing levels that night. And I didn't know what that meant. And so once we were out and about, I recognized how quickly that puts the city at pretty an anemic level in response, and certainly as we're dealing with some of the issues that are present. I was just kind of curious, I know that we went on a call, there were four officers that responded, that left four to cover the rest of the city in that moment. And I, I understood geographically and efficiently why, the ways that, that became problematic. So my question is, I knew we just hired a, a brand-new class of officers, and I'm curious, what's the timing in terms of how they're getting phased in and, and up and running and, and, you know, out and about, out in the field? And how, how is staffing, and is it headed in the right trajectory, so that we're not at those minimums, or, or where are we at?
Steve, you want to take that, and then I'll follow up?
So, great question, and, and we, we definitely appreciate those of you that come out and done some ride-alongs lately, our officers. It makes, they know us, they notice, and it makes a difference, so thank you. So with staffing, we did recently hire 20 basic officers, which means we hired them, and now they're in the police academy. And so they'll be out back in our house within about four months. Then they'll start field training. So that's another three-plus months. So realistically, it will be a little bit before we are where we want to be staffing-wise. We have a few impending departures, people leaving for other things, and so that's always the battle, is attrition. But we have hired, in the last two weeks, we've hired two previously certified police officers, one from North Glenn and one from out of state. And both of, of those officers have challenged the post-test and are, are getting certified. The North Glenn officer's already certified, and so they'll be out on the street much sooner. And so it's, it's, it's getting better, and, and we still have, you know, units that initially we had to pull officers from the patrol that are not fully staffed. So our hope, our big hope is that we can stave off some of the attrition for long enough to get some of our newer officers there. If we can keep all of those 20-plus officers, and we can stave off attrition, I think we'll be in a really good place come late summer, early fall. And we can start not only getting patrol fully staffed, but potentially backfilling some of the special units, adding some more detectives. So please, you know, anything you can do to, to send us anybody that would be a good police officer, we'll take them.
Mark?
First, thank you for that presentation. It was very, very thorough and substantive. I really appreciate it. I assume the problem areas you illustrated in, in that presentation are not exclusive of other areas, that, that may not rise to that level, but still cause a little bit of problem. Would that be the case?
Yes.
Okay. Because I was going to ask, I've gotten a bunch of letters with respect to say, "Attention, homes." And I don't know whether that's actually a, a problem or not, or, but I've been giving a bit of feedback on it, and I was wondering if, how they were doing in terms of calls for service.
Thanks for that question. And 1440 Pine, I think they're now called together. They are on our radar and have been for quite some time. And actually, we have not deemed it an official problem-solving project, but it is a problem-solving project for us. Steve has assigned a captain and an officer to work with, together on some of their management practices. And I have met with their staff. We have an ongoing meeting monthly. And the good news is, is their calls for service are trending downward. Dr. Reinhardt provides them with weekly data that's given to them automatically. He's automated the process where they get data on all their properties, not just 1440 Pine, but they have a couple of other properties as well. And so we continue to work on their management practices. They've been very cooperative. And we do have an officer that goes to 1440 Pine on a regular basis and talks to the members of their community and tries to prevent the calls for service that we're seeing. But I, I can tell you that it is problematic for the community, and we'll probably elevate their status next time to one of the projects that we talk about, so you have a good understanding of, of what's happening there. And I think it would be good for the community to hear as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mark. Lauren?
Thank you.
One of the things that I've recently been noticing in the national news is an uptick in reckless driving and sort of associated incidents, and I know that we're going to talk about our Vision Zero Plan later, but I was just wondering what data we have around that in the city and what trends we've been seeing, and if that's not easily available right now, I'd be happy to take my answer as an email later.
No, I think it's an excellent question, and I think you're absolutely right, and I think that fatalities, I just watched a presentation at the state level of how many people are being killed on expressways and state highways in Colorado, and it's really alarming. And there's probably several reasons for that, but we most certainly can provide you with really good data on what we're seeing, and some of the reasons that we think that we are seeing upticks with auto accidents and other pedestrian vehicular accidents as well. And it is, I do find it very problematic. And again, a lot of the traffic, you really need to pay attention to it several different ways, right? Other city departments, traffic calming, traffic enforcement, traffic visibility by the police department. And so I'd love to give you some key points that we're seeing in our data, and Dr. Reinhardt would be glad to get you those.
I believe that's it. So thanks again so much.
Thanks, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for all the information, all the phenomenal work the department does each and every day.
Thanks, I appreciate that a lot.
Very good. Well, that brings us to the end of our initial items, and I'm very grateful to the open-comment speakers for your patience. We're now going to get to open comment, item two on our agenda. And I'll just mention that speaker number two, Jan Burton, is going to be virtual, so we'll be at the end of the list. Number four, Robert Smoke, has withdrawn, and number seven, Patrick O'Rourke, has withdrawn, and then we have added an in-person speaker, Catherine Barth, is the last in-person speaker. So with that, I'll turn it over to Brenda to do our code of contact. Conduct.
Thank you so much, and I appreciate Lisa sharing those slides for me, especially because my computer's acting up, so I also apologize for any glitches there may be in tonight's process. So we love to start each public comment portion by reminding those of you who are participating tonight, as well as everyone else in attendance and participating, that we have engaged with community members to co-create a vision for meaningful and inclusive civic conversation. And this vision really was designed to support the physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council members, and also supports democracy for people of all ages, all identities, lived experience, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision and the community engagement process, please visit boldercolorado.gov/services/productiveatmospheres, or you could just search productive atmospheres in our search bar. Next slide, please. And the following are examples. I'm just gonna make this a little bigger for myself, so I appreciate your patience, Channel 8. The following are examples of rules of decorum found in the Boulder revised code and other guidelines that support this vision, and these will be upheld during tonight's meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business or herein open comments, whatever you've come to share with us that relates to city business. No persistent shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. Obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. Participants are required to sign up to speak using the name they're commonly known by, and individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online, thanks to those of you who've helped me do that for you tonight. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. In-person participants are asked to refrain from expressing support or disagreement, verbally or with applause, with the exception of our declarations, as we did earlier this evening. Traditionally, support can be shown silently through American Sign Language applause or jazz hands. And with that, I think we are ready to move into open comments.
Thanks so much, Brenda. All right, our first three speakers are Trish Emzer, Evan Rabbits, and Michelle Rodriguez. Come on down. You have two minutes.
Thank you. My name's Trish Emzer, and I'm here to speak tonight about the safety of Boulder Creek. I'd like to start with a recent account from a local Boulder ER physician who's been in that business for more than 20 years, and I quote, "I've seen many patients in the ER who have been injured or sickened after swimming in the Boulder Creek in recent years, everything from GI issues to skin ailments. I treated a young boy who had stepped on a needle while playing in the creek. He required post-exposure treatment, which made him quite ill, and he experienced months of anxiety waiting to see if he contracted HIV," end of quote. Please refer to the PowerPoint that you'll see over here. This is from the Keep It Clean Partnership data, and what it represents is the increasing levels of E. coli annually from 2014 through 2019. You'll see the trend line there for recreational use. Since 2015, E. coli levels in recreation season have exceeded the threshold of safety, with numbers trending up yearly. When the last publicized water quality measures at the CU testing site were provided the fall of 2019, E. coli averaged two to three times the safe threshold of 126 CFUs out of 100 milliliters. There are four signs posted fairly far apart, and they are not really adequate to warn of the danger within the creek with the E. coli. With summer fast approaching, our children and loved ones will be wading, tubing, and swimming in the creek very soon. In July of 2020, the city reported to the WRAB that, quote, "E. coli concentrations consistently show increases spatially between Evan G. Fine Park and 13th Street is also a popular location for recreators in Boulder Creek. Thus, better understanding E. coli contributions may help further the city's goal of protecting recreators," end of quote. Since that report, no information has been provided to the public. Please, if you could immediately release the water quality findings. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now we have Evan Rabbits, then Michelle Rodriguez, and Darren O'Connor.
God bless the ACLU. By taking the city to court, they made you finally tell the truth, that there often are not enough shelter beds for the homeless in deadly weather. At least three local media debunked this lie years ago, but the city soldiered on because its culture is deception and manipulation masquerading as engagement. Another official lie was that a legal campground would cost more than hotel rooms. Only the lawsuit has gotten you to talk seriously of legal campgrounds next Thursday. There were many city lies that led to butchering the details of our first-in-the-country online petitioning system, which I have documented at tinyearl.com/petitionstory. They resulted in the city spending over half a million dollars and counting on inferior software and rejecting on false pretenses a free offer of exactly what we needed, and spending more to find a new city manager, new city IT director, and new city attorney to replace the previous liars. There are 8 billion people on the planet who want real government by the people. Thousands are being tortured to death as we speak for working for democracy, and you, some of the most privileged people on the planet, think it's a game to obstruct it. You kiss up to the 800-pound gorillas who control you by subverting democracy. Anyone abused by the city should sue, if only to get the truth. I regret that I didn't back in the 80s, when the city's mall commission was shutting down our shows with no authority to do so. May the lawsuits fall like rain on this truth desert.
Thank you, Evan. Now we have Michelle Rodriguez, Darren O'Connor, and Travis Hugh Cully.
Hi, guys. Michelle Rodriguez, I wanted to say that today at 2:00, after two years and eight months in civil federal court with my lawsuit, Rodriguez versus Lolatai, my unrepresented self and underrepresented self had my case dismissed based on your senior city attorney's words that Ms. Rivera wasn't, she wasn't convinced, and that there were no terms to be negotiated on. Your name was used personally. I'd like to say that there's an officer here present today that, per your former city attorney's words in responding to the motion of summary judgment to have my case dismissed, he said it was non-named defendant officers and paramedics that were guilty of my incident and of having me chemically sedated. And he said, in fact, there was one officer, Mr. Sterling E. Coe, who spoke up in her behalf and said that it was wrong what he was doing. Mr. Officer E. Coe back here, and this is the first time I've gotten to see him. Since then, I want him to know that you should be honored at the highest level, and Chief Maris Harold should feel privileged to have you. It's an honor that you were one of nine male officers there that spoke up. You can be seen and heard on video, and I want to thank you for having the integrity to speak in my behalf, despite all your fellow officers there. Thirty of them dropped the roll the week I filed my civil lawsuit. I still have the right to, I guess, hope that somebody will operate with integrity, but this man right here deserves to be honored. Thank you, Chief Harold, for hanging around to hear this. And these were words that came out of former Tom Carr's mouth right before he resigned. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Michelle. Now we have Darren O'Connor, Travis Hugh Cully, and Jennifer Rhodes.
Hi, I'm Darren O'Connor. I'm here speaking on behalf of the NAACP Boulder County Branch tonight. About a year ago, roughly 25 of us were here speaking out unanimously against Boulder signing an MOU with the FBI Joint Terrorism Task Force. Chief Harold claimed then that the FBI was necessary to protect Boulder from white supremacists, even as our Black and other at-risk community members said, "Thanks, but no thanks." We remember recent history when around 2010, the JTF made spy files on racial and housing justice advocates in Denver and were caught by the ACLU of Colorado. In less than a year since signing the MOU, the local FBI JTF has been caught doing exactly what we warned of and worse. In Aurora at protests over the brutal police murder of Elijah McLean, they tried to entrap Black advocates in a plot to murder our Attorney General. Breaking national articles have discovered that a man named Winddecker with a significant criminal history, including a sexual relationship with a 14-year-old girl, was used by the FBI as an informant for this work in Aurora. In Colorado spring, the FBI's targeting resulted in the arrest of a Colorado-based staffer for Democratic US Senator Michael Bennett, as well as racial justice and housing advocates with the nonprofit Chinook. In less than a year, the FBI has shown our warnings were warranted, and your promises of their good behavior were empty. Even now, Mayor Brockett shares that the addendum to the MOU prevents the FBI from breaking local police policy as if that will stop them. The MOU says no such thing. The addendum, paragraph four, requires only our Boulder officer to follow BPD administrative procedures, but if the procedures conflict with the FBI policies, that officer shall follow FBI policies. You have invited the police state into Boulder with this agreement. End the NOU with the FBI JTF. End it now, end it now, end it now.
Thanks, Darren. Now we have Travis Hugh Cully, Jennifer Rhodes, and Terry Brunchich.
Good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to be here. Ms. Weiner, I hear that you're not well. I'm very sorry to hear that you're under the weather. I wish you a speedy recovery. My concern is an environmental one. I hate to pop the bubble. However, if we can throw a stone and hit a doctor in Boulder, it's because someone probably should be testing those stones. We need to sample and sample and sample the region around Rocky Flats because it endangers us in terms of future fires. Ms. Weiner, I wanted to remind you and hope that in the April 3 meeting which you are at, you were able to see yourself, some of the insolence of the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council in terms of their approach to public engagement. They went ahead after pretending to hear us, presenting architectural drawings about entry into the wildlife refuge, and I think it's important that we restrict that. As the crow flies, the Marshall Fire took place one branch outside of the crow's nest, the crow's nest being the Rocky Flats Wildlife Refuge. Two fires took place there, September 11th of '57, May 11th of '69, and the third fire was December 30th, 2021. I hope, Ms. Weiner, you will join Broomfield, Arvada, and Boulder County in developing an air monitor system directed to capture hazardous radionuclides from Rocky Flats. You are the only hope we have, as the Rocky Flats Stewardship Council clearly is not interested in executing any effort for our safety. The executive director has given these three cities the room to draft a radiological emergency response plan. I think it would be wise to support this conversation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Travis. Now we have Jennifer Rhodes, Terry Brunchich, and Abigail Dumrocky.
In Boulder, we have a city, a school, and school leadership that will not support a school safe zone. We have two council members who originally voted against the propane tank ban. Two years later, several propane tanks exploded near schools with near misses. We have a VP of BVSD who, on the same day of those tank explosions, tweeted that moving people and their illegal propane tanks away from schools is unethical. We have a Sharps container for fentanyl needles placed adjacent to a high school. We have a council member who unethically and under false pretenses testified at the state level, claiming she represents the voice of Boulder in favor of safe injection sites. There's an active complaint filed against her. We have a municipal court judge who does not believe in consequences, even if a person has 100 camping tickets near a school. We have a town court, where it was recommended to me that I should teach my daughters to protect themselves, because Judge Cook won't consider enhanced penalties even for multiple offenses committed around schools. We have a city where there are numerous reports of sexual assault and harassment, kids being lunged at and encouraged to take drugs all near a school. We have E. coli in an infected creek from public defecation. We have biased journalists who report on these issues and twist and misrepresent the truth, so much so that people are afraid to speak out. Yesterday, it was reported that, quote, "Earlier this year, the 72-hour rule was lifted." No, that was two weeks ago, after the tank explosions, and the city decided to follow their own ordinance. We have council members so afraid of lawsuits that the policies have been wavering and unclear at best, despite the 21 ordinance that was instated to protect the public. Propane tanks have remained hidden in tents and in plain sight photographed and reported by us and to the city for 10 days prior to those same tank explosions. We should be compassionate and help those experiencing homelessness, and we should protect our kids and provide a safe environment for them. The city has the capacity to help both vulnerable populations, those experiencing homelessness, and our children. Permitting people to erect tents again and again, where they are using drugs, overdosing, and hiding tanks that then explode, that is not compassionate. We are failing at providing a safe environment for both vulnerable populations, and we have had enough.
Thank you, Jennifer. Now we have Terry Brunchich, Abigail Dumrocky, and Catherine Barth.
Hi, my name is Terry Brunchich. I'm speaking on behalf of the Safe Zones for Kids Initiative. I want to address several statements that have been made by city officials and other community organizations in response to our proposed ballot initiative. First, I want to talk about propane tank removal policies. In 2021, the council passed an emergency ordinance to permit the immediate removal of tents and propane tanks in public spaces, largely in response to the significant public safety and fire threat posed by the propane tanks. The removal of tents was included in that ordinance because the council acknowledged that propane tanks were often stored inside tents where they were not immediately visible to law enforcement. Despite this ordinance, the city has stated it will immediately remove visible propane tanks, but not tents that might contain them. Propane tanks are a public safety threat, whether they are in or out of a tent. Of the three tanks that exploded in March and the 352 that were confiscated last year, can the city confidently say that 100% of these would have been removed under the visible tank policy? If not, then there is no rational justification for this willfully ignorant policy. Second, several media reports suggested that removal of the 72-hour notice period may compromise the city's defense against the ACLU lawsuit, but the ACLU lawsuit claims pertaining to prohibited items were dismissed in full, so why are we still giving 72-hours notice for these items? Furthermore, many of the individuals that are illegally using tents and propane tanks in public spaces have been cited repeatedly. What possible legal argument can be made for continuing to provide warnings when someone is knowingly and repeatedly breaking the law? Finally, in the materials provided for the upcoming study session, it was noted that other cities provide 72-hour notice around schools. I was on this call with the city of Portland. What they actually said was that they provide notice except when there is an immediate threat to public safety. It's hard to imagine a larger public safety threat than propane tanks exploding next to a school. Immediately following the tank explosions at BHS, the city manager announced a special enforcement policy that allows for immediate clearance of tents on paths and signage in these areas. This policy effectively mirrors what the Safe Zones Initiative is asking for and is overdue, but given the city's track record, we want it codified through Safe Zones. Thanks. Thanks.
Thank you for your testimony. Abigail Dumrocki next, and then Catherine Barth.
I'm Abigail Dumrocki. I'm a junior at Boulder High. During my high school years, I never thought that there would be so many issues around the safety of students. The fact that Boulder High has had multiple threats shocks me. We've had multiple lockdowns this school year and police on campus numerous times for safety issues. It almost seems common now. Teachers have always told us that schools are a safe space, but it isn't anymore. Kids should not be stressing out every Wednesday morning, wondering if we're going to go on another lockdown. I shouldn't have, I shouldn't have to have the police telling me and my classmates to go back into school because there's an argument and a fight broke out in the homeless camp near the school's rope course. It shouldn't be like that. We should make sure that there aren't homeless encampments bordering our schools and pass. My experience is that they harass and yell at people walking by and could, should not have to deal with that on a daily basis just to get to school. Things need to change. We need new laws to protect our students. What happened to our rights? What happened to schools being a safe haven? Our own school board is fighting against us having a safe space. How is that okay? Our school implemented ID checks, and that isn't working. Anyone can get into our school, and they have. There's no one there to enforce or check this. We need actual laws that the people who are supposed to protect us aren't afraid to enforce. We need a safe environment to attend outside sports and classes. And we need to feel safe walking to and from school, not afraid of someone yelling at us or approaching us. We don't need needles and drugs present around us every day. Our own school board has failed to help ensure a safe space, claiming it is against the rights of the vulnerable homeless. What about our rights? What about our vulnerability? Students are speaking out because we don't want to be labeled or criticized. But let me be the first to tell you, I don't feel safe in or around school, and I won't unless you start to listen and finally do something about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Abigail, and appreciate you coming out. We don't get many high school students given testimony, so thanks for joining us tonight. Catherine Barth is our last in-person speaker, and then we'll go to online.
My name is Catherine Barth. I haven't been here for a while. It's nice to see you all again. I'm a preservation architect, and I have worked for 10 years with the Boulder Duchamp Tea House, doing first a study with Laura Ramsey and then doing some sampling and looking at some issues with color and paints and all this and that. And I'm very thrilled that we're having, starting our celebration of 25 years, of the Tea House being part of our community and the, I mean, maybe hundreds of hours that I've spent there studying it and photographing it and grabbing a chai. So while I'm, will be celebrating it, a colleague of mine, who I became quite close to, Vern Cyro, will not be at the celebrations. And I was at the library and realized that the Carnegie Library did not know that he passed away. So I thought I should come here and, speaking here, perhaps it'll reach a somewhat larger audience. And I'm hoping that at some point, his enormous contribution to Boulder, both the Tea House and the 200 cartons of building he put together, plus the library, plus all of the work that he did at CU, can be acknowledged and honored at some point. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Catherine. All right, we have four online speakers, the first three of whom are Lynn Segal, Carter Hilty, and Dana Bove.
Catherine, I didn't know Vern died, but I'm so glad that I heard it from you. That's so horrid. What I wanted to talk about today was I'd like the City of Boulder to commemorate Dan Ellsberg. Dan Ellsberg, lots of you young folks don't even know who Dan Ellsberg is, but you should look him up. He leaked the Pentagon Papers. He's turning 92 tomorrow. He was born in 31, the same year as my mom, in Chicago. My mom also was born there. And it's my birthday too tomorrow, but I'm going to be 70. So Dan basically, single-handedly stopped the Vietnam War. He had an interesting situation happen. The National Security Secretary that he worked under, James McNaughton, spoke about how we could fashion the Vietnam War so that it looks better to the public because a lot of, you know, people were getting killed that were from the United States and, of course, the civilians in Vietnam. And he suggested flooding the rice paddies so that the people would not be killed, but would be starved, and then you could throw money at them, feed them, and it would look better than them being killed. And that was a strategy for the war. Dan is an amazing guy that should be commemorated. From the 24th and the 30th of this month, there's a national effort in that, and I hope that the City of Boulder does something about it. I wanted, and this reflects on the issue of the moratorium in 1969, the year my mother died from Rocky Flats, no doubt, from the 1957 fire. And I don't have a timer up.
Lynn, your time's up. It just beeped.
Yeah. I just need to have a timer up so that, you know, like, so that I know, I can, you know, please.
We'll get back to you on that, but thank you for your testimony and a very happy early birthday to you. Now we have Carter Hilty, Dana Bove, and Jan Burton.
Hello, my name is Carter Hilty, and my family has been in Boulder for four generations. My grandfather left Boulder after getting an art degree from CU, and he returned in 1970. He purchased his first property in Boulder in Table Mesa in 1970 for $70,000. He later sold that home for $680,000. And it isn't a secret that the overall cost of housing in Boulder has risen exponentially over the last few decades. According to the Apartment Association of Metro Denver, rent has risen 88% in the last decade, and according to rent analysis organization Rentometer, rent in Boulder has risen 13% in the last year alone. Although Colorado's wage increases outpace the US nationally, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, these increases fail to offset the impacts of rising costs of living, the rental crisis, and inflation. The City of Boulder should support responsible rent control. Laws similar to the bill currently in front of the Colorado Senate are responsible. They allow Boulder to manage its own rent control scheme, accommodate the vast number of college students propping up Boulder's economy, and protect those college students from predatory rental practices by limiting rent increases. Landlords would still be able to rent, to raise rent higher than the rate of inflation. And as a short-term solution geared towards stabilizing the rental economy, this bill, economy, this bill is an excellent option. Otherwise, I encourage thoughtful discussion of alternatives, including continuing to push for the construction of more affordable student housing and other affordable living communities similar to Boulder Junction. Thank you.
Thank you, Carter. Now we have Dana Bove and Jan Burton.
Okay, thank you. My name's Dana Bovey. I lead a 501(c)(3) research organization. It's called Front Range Eagle Studies. The City of Boulder is privileged to have one pair of nesting bald eagles that nests on its crown jewel HCA open space at White Rocks. This pair of eagles is one of 240 nesting pairs in the entire state. Bald eagles are still federally protected, and the Colorado population is one of the smallest in the country due to our very dry climate. White Rocks Wetland Restoration Project was effectively under the radar to the public and was planned and initiated on February 6 and continues today. Due to its timing, it's not only coincident with historic egg-laying averaging near the end of February for this particular pair, but also during peak use of a nearby bald eagle communal ruse. Just like last year, these nesting eagles began active nesting activity about one-half-mile apart at two nests in the HCA. Nesting activity has been near evenly observed at both nests. Unfortunately, one of the nests was right in the middle of heavy construction activity. Near the end of February, when these eagles typically lay eggs, there were dozers and tracked backhoes no less than 100 to 150 meters from the easternmost active nest. Even after our organization alerted all these entities, OSMP continued heavy construction activity still 150 to 200 meters from the eastern active nest. Colorado Parks and Wildlife has written science-based guidelines that require no surface occupancy or potential disturbance less than 800 meters from a bald eagle nest during the timeframe that includes egg-laying. This season, the White Rocks bald eagles have not laid eggs. They are now about five weeks past their normal incubation or egg-laying timeframe.
Dana, I'm afraid your time is up, but I appreciate your testimony and thanks for that. Our last speaker is Jan Burton.
Good evening, Council. Jan Burton, on behalf of Create Boulder. On the eve of Boulder Arts Week, I'm pleased to announce that the final report for the Arts Complex Visioning Workshop will be available tomorrow on Create Boulder's website. We are grateful to those of you who joined dozens of other stakeholders to weigh in on the community's need and readiness to build what many Colorado communities already enjoy, a central arts and culture complex with performance spaces, galleries, and studios for local artists and arts organizations. Our guest panel of experts concluded that Boulder can support a new arts and culture complex, but it may take as long as 10 to 15 years to bring to fruition. However, they identified more pressing needs for affordable work and living spaces, including studios, rehearsal, and class spaces, and smaller performance venues. In the next few years and at a much lower cost than a new arts complex, Boulder can provide more spaces for diverse community uses by adapting existing, underused, or vacant buildings, some of which are owned by the city and Central Boulder. It is worth noting that the Dairy, Bimoka, E-Town, and Museum of Boulder are all successful examples of such adaptive reuse. As your declaration stated tonight, arts and culture enrich the lives of all who live, visit, or work in Boulder and are an economic cornerstone of our city. We encourage you and all who value the economic, social, and educational vitality of Boulder to learn how we can all work together to fill critical gaps in our arts and culture ecosystem. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan. Well, thanks to everyone who spoke to us tonight, whether in person or virtually. Appreciate your involvement. Turn to city staff to see if there are any responses.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple things, there are a couple things today that I'll follow up on as we continue to move forward, including the wastewater testing and the reporting. I know that our utilities team does a quite thorough and frequent job of testing as we move forward. I also just want to appreciate comments made about camping and tents, and I know that we're going to have a much larger conversation about that next Thursday. We certainly have, and I hope you've seen, we have tightened up some of our protocols. We'll talk a little bit more in detail about that. And always want to say that we're trying to balance public safety concerns with supporting and trying to help our unsheltered community go into housing, which we know is, for many in our community, the solution to homelessness as we move forward. And it is, it is not a simple issue. It is hopefully not a binary issue as we continue to learn about this in community, and we'll be talking a little bit more about that in detail next week.
No comments from me. Thank you.
Thanks, Sandra, from Council, Rachel. Lauren, I got a couple things.
I just wondered if there was a testimony that the FBI has bungled something in the last year and that maybe our MOU would not inhibit what was bungled, so wondering if we could get an update on that. If not tonight, then, you know, within the next few weeks.
I am happy to follow up. I'll note that the addendum to the MOU does say that if there is a conflict, that our designated officer can remove themselves so as not to violate city policies as we move forward. But I don't know the details that were referred to, but happy to have us look at that and if there is an update to provide that to Council.
If I can just follow up. So, Nuri, can or shall, my memory, the addendum says that if there is a conflict with city policies, then the Boulder officer should not participate in the violation of those policies?
It does say that, although it depends on which policy it is. There are some conflicts that are administrative in nature. They're not about the nature of the work, but they may be, and the chief's not here to explain it a little bit more, but it's, it's less about whether it's, it's less about things, important things, like the use of body cam footage, for example, or body-borne cameras, or things like that. But it does say that we will take a look at that, and the officer, the officer is intended to remove themselves if there is something of substantive significance, but...
Do you mind getting us clarity on that?
Absolutely.
I appreciate figuring out those details.
And maybe, like, applying our MOU to the facts that supposedly occurred in Denver, because I'm not super familiar with that, but I think that it would be helpful to know, like, does our MOU strictly cover that, and maybe so we all have awareness of that situation as well.
Right, because it was certainly my understanding that we would not participate in any conflict with policies. Yes.
Yeah, and it's not just a Denver incident. There's been a couple, like the Aurora incident as well, which I believe there was a municipal police officer undercover working for the JTTF doing things that I would see as not being in line with, maybe, maybe that we don't have explicit rules against, but infiltrating organizations like the Black Lives Matter movement. So I would be interested in knowing more about, you know, is our officer participating in undercover work as part through the JTTF?
Happy to get back to Council on all of these questions as we learn more about what was specifically alleged in Denver.
Did you have something else?
Since I brought it up, I just wanted to make sure that Lauren's point was captured, Denver and others, I guess, that are relevant.
Did you have something else, Lauren? Go ahead.
Also with the, you mentioned bringing forward some of the data around E. coli and water testing. You know, in conversations that I've had with our wastewater and utilities staff, there's been mention that sort of, I think the community understanding of where E. coli is coming from and their, the city's scientific understanding of where, or thoughts about where that might be coming from are different. So maybe that could also include some educational component to it. And I also just wanted to mention, someone brought up the rent control bill HB 231115, and I just wanted to say that the city did support that, and I was able to testify on the city's behalf in support of that.
Very good. I got Nicole.
Yeah, I really appreciated folks coming and talking to us tonight. One of the things I was wondering, Nuri, you know, our youth are just dealing with so much right now, and what we're seeing is just skyrocketing rates of mental health issues, suicidal ideations, suicide attempts, things like that, and it just keeps kind of getting worse. I'm wondering, is there anything coming up in our agendas where we will hear about some of this? I mean, some of it, I think it's tied to so many issues, like, we'll hear about family homelessness next week and some of that, but is there anything coming up where we'll be able to do that? If not, I will be happy to email CAC, see if we can get something about it.
I appreciate that, Councilmember. There's a couple things that are intertwined. I can't imagine that as we talk about homelessness next week, that we won't be talking a little bit about mental health concerns that we're hearing and a proliferation of meth and fentanyl in our community. On the 27th as well of April, we will be having staff present to talk about the impact specifically of what we're seeing of meth and fentanyl and how that impacts our city operations, but that will actually be preceded by folks who actually know this best, which are our partners in Boulder County Public Health, and they'll be sharing some of that as well. We have been having different conversations with our Boulder County partners just about mental health issues in general, and I believe that's an area that perhaps we can bring to Council to talk... to Council to talk a little bit about soon. I know that Boulder County has been working on research and reports, and I believe they have put something out recently, and if not, it's soon to come out about some mental health behavior, health issues in community, and it is something that I think would be of interest to our community as well. So we'll be thinking about how to bring that more to the fore soon.
Yeah, thank you. And in those conversations, anything specifically around youth, I would be particularly interested in, I believe they're, just in the first semester of the school year, I believe one of our high schools had three suicides, so, thank you.
I just wanted to call acquaint on what you brought up, and just to add to what Nuri was saying, I'm expecting the next week or so to be able to provide an update to Council about what we discussed at the retreat, about a potential ballot measure and tax that would look at tobacco, alcohol, and cannabis, perhaps, to directly support mental health and drug addiction. And so perhaps there's an opportunity to, the timing may work, but we're still waiting on the finance team, but I just want to make sure you know that that's down, coming down the pipeline as well.
And then I just have one last thing to bring up. We had a test of, testimony from Dana Bovee about the eagles nesting, and just want to confirm, I think I've seen some regular email correspondence with Mr. Bovee, and just want to confirm that our open space department is looking into these issues around the eagle nesting.
I do. I know that they, they take that very seriously. I know that they always look at those issues, and we can certainly provide Council with an update on that particular issue in the future.
Thanks, appreciate that. All right, that brings us to the end of open comment at the early hour of 8:50 PM. Thanks again to everybody who testified. Emily, if we can move to our consent agenda, please.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Next on our agenda, we have our consent agenda, and that consists of items A through F.
Questions or comments about the consent agenda?
I'm going to have a question after we vote, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Aaron, thanks.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure, I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a roll call vote, all in favor. Get that roll call, please.
Absolutely. We'll start the roll on tonight's consent agenda with Councilmember Friend.
Yes.
Joseph?
Yes.
Spear?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wallach?
You're muted, Merk.
Maybe that was intentional. Yes.
Weiner?
Yes.
Councilmember Yates?
Yes.
Benjamin?
Yes.
Mayor Brockett?
Yes.
And Councilmember Fokerts?
Yes.
The consent agenda items, A through F, are hereby approved unanimously.
Great. Bob, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, it's kind of a question for Sandra. Sandra, the item that we just approved was on, item 3F was with respect to a code of conduct complaint, and I think this is, I don't know, the fifth or sixth one we've had this quarter, and as, as I recall, and I think Aaron and I compared notes on this recently, I think in the, per seven years we served on Council, we had maybe one. So it seems like there's a lot of these recently, and I don't want to comment on the merits of any of these, because I know you've got special counsel looking at these, but I guess a question for you is, would there be bandwidth, if this was the will of Council, would there be bandwidth in your department sometime in the next few months to take a look at our code of conduct complaint protocols and make some recommendations? And maybe the recommendation's not to make a change. I'm not implying or suggesting there should be a change, but I just can't help but notice that there's been a lot of these recently, and I don't know if that's a new trend, and maybe it's something that Council might want your department to take a look at if that's what Council wants to do.
Yes, thank you for the question, Councilmember Yates, and if it's the will of Council, we can certainly look into it. I think it will be challenging, because obviously we want, we don't want to curtail the ability for folks to be able to issue valid complaints, but we can look at other jurisdictions as well to see if maybe they're doing it differently, or if there's perhaps just some sort of filter, a threshold point where we could make that determination. So we can look into it if that's the will of Council. We just need your direction.
Okay. Maybe what I'll do, colleagues, is I think we usually typically around the June-ish timeframe, maybe June or July, have a work plan check-in, mid-year check-in, and so maybe that'd be a good time for us to kind of evaluate what our workload is. I mean, if people want to do it sooner, that's fine, but checking on work plan and workload and what the rest of the year's looking like, I just wonder if this is something we should at least evaluate.
Thanks for the point, Bob. I don't think we'd want to discuss the substance of that right now, since it hasn't been brought up in advance, but appreciate you raising the point, and maybe you can make a CAC request and talk about it a little further. Great, I think that's it for that. So Emily, if we could go to our next item for matter from the city manager, please.
Yes, thank you so much, Mayor. Next is our matters from city manager, and on that we have item 6A, which is the Vision Zero Action Plan update.
And I'm going to turn it right over to our interim director of transportation and mobility, as I see she won the short straw of standing at the podium instead of joining us at the dais.
I'm happy to stand at the podium. Good evening, Council. I'm Natalie Stifler, the interim director of transportation and mobility. Well, they're getting the shuffle done. I'll just quickly say, I'm here with Devin Joslin, our city's principal traffic engineer. Charlie Alexander's joining him up there. He's our consultant with Farr and Peers. And Melanie Sloan from Transportation Mobility, she's a principal planner. She's also with us tonight. She helped with the engagement on this project. So I just wanted to highlight a couple of things, and then I'll hand it over to Devin. We're very excited to be here tonight to share an update and present our draft Vision Zero Action Plan. This is an operational plan for us that guides our work plan, so we're not seeking any action from you tonight, only your informal support and any feedback you have on the direction we're headed with the plan. I think you'll also be pleased to hear about some of the key changes we've made to this update since our last action plan. This update really focuses on taking a more proactive approach to how we address safety across our system. And then, secondly, this update is also really timely in that it prepares us to consider grant opportunities with the 2021 federal infrastructure law, specifically the Safe Streets for All grant opportunity, that will be a significant opportunity for us to seek significant funding for our community, and this plan tees us up well to be competitive for that. So those are really the only two things I wanted to highlight, and at this point, I'll hand it over to Devin. Thanks.
Thank you, Natalie. Good evening, members of Council. My name is Devin Joslin, and as Natalie said, I'm the city's principal traffic engineer. Since I last met with you in March 2022 to present the Safe Streets Boulder Report, I've been serving as the project manager on the Vision Zero Action Plan, and very excited to be here tonight to present this updated plan to you. As Natalie also said, I'm joined up here tonight by Charlie Alexander, our consultant team project manager from Farr and Peers, and he's here to help me answer your questions following the presentation. Before I begin, I just want to thank the team that worked on this project. It was a very large effort for the Transportation and Mobility Department to accomplish this project, and there were many people that worked behind the scenes. I also want to thank our community for providing very good feedback to this project along the way, and I also want to thank our Transportation Advisory Board, the Community Connectors and Residents, Community Cycles Advocacy Committee, and the Center for People with Disabilities, who also played an instrumental role in the execution of this project. Next slide, please. Tonight, I'll walk through five main points. Our process for preparing the updated plan, how we engaged with the community and other stakeholders and use that feedback to inform the plan, how the updated plan is different than the prior action plan, the progress we made on actions in the prior plan, and how the new plan incorporated additional analyses to identify top crash types and shape actions around eliminating them. Finally, the next steps for implementing the plan, and how there are complementary efforts underway that will further serve to achieve the city's Vision Zero goals. Next slide, please. Our process included three major steps. In the first step, we completed community engagement and citywide crash data analysis to better understand locations of greatest risk and crash trends. In the second step, we did a deep dive corridor-level analysis on each of the 18 high-risk network arterial street segments. We used those analyses to develop 20 actions, which we vetted through a second round of community engagement and TAB feedback. Next slide, please. The plan included two phases of community engagement in summer 2022 and winter 2023. Throughout the project, the project team offered Be Heard Boulder and other project materials such as social media posts in both Spanish and English. The team was also fortunate to join in the San Lazaro Resource Fair. Following the first phase of engagement, we met with the Community Connectors and Residents in late October to help inform our Phase Two engagement strategies. As you can see on the slide, and as I mentioned earlier, we met with TAB, Community Cycles, and Center for People with Disabilities twice throughout the life of the project. Based on the feedback we received, we made 20 changes based on 25 comments that generally made the plan's language more clear, removed or revised actions, and integrated language on improvements and benefits for people with disabilities. Next slide, please. We heard from stakeholders a desire that the new plan should focus on action and be achievable with anticipated staffing and funding levels, and this plan is structured to do that. Natalie mentioned that this plan tees us up to pursue safe streets and roads for all funding, and I'm pleased to say that this plan checks all the boxes and the requirements that that grant has in terms of an action plan and being able to move forward to the implementation stage. Next slide, please. Before I talk about the updated plan, I want to provide an update on the prior plan. The prior plan included 50 actions, and half of those actions were on track to meet their target. They were either completed or on track to, on track to be completed. A quarter of the actions fell in the category that we've referred to as some progress made but not quite on track, and the third quarter, the last quarter of actions basically did not have much progress made or was not complete. The actions that were completed were things that focused on installing countermeasures, implementing signal phasing changes, enforcing unsafe travel behaviors, advocating for changes to state legislation, participating in regional Vision Zero meetings to share knowledge, and improving accuracy of crash data and data transparency. Actions that had some progress but not enough to meet the target included such things as updates to design standards, refinements to signage at right-turn slip lanes, developing a pan, a plan for multi-use path lighting at underpasses and key intersections, bolstering social media engagement, and conducting evaluations to measure effectiveness of Vision Zero and capital improvement projects. Most of the incomplete actions are focused on things like education campaigns, raising awareness of and increasing funding for Vision Zero, and better tracking progress of actions in a more transparent way. Next slide, please. For context, going back to 2009, the city's highest number of severe crashes was in 2014, when we had 75 serious injury and one fatal crash. Last year, we had 48 serious injury and one fatal crash. While Boulder's annual number of fatal and serious injury crashes is low compared to other peer communities and has decreased since 2014, when Vision Zero was first adopted, it is still too much. Our goal is zero. However, what this all means is that our current level of severe crashes makes crash reduction in the city uniquely challenging, since it is difficult to establish location-specific patterns of crashes. For this reason, the updated action plan looked at a period of five years from 2016 to 2020 to help inform the actions. To meaningfully, to meaningfully reduce crashes, we had to think about safety intervention differently, which is why the updated action plan included what's called a systemic safety analysis. Next slide, please. Because our level of crashes makes it difficult to establish location-specific patterns, we need to take what's called a systemic safety approach. This approach is an international best practice for safety planning. The systemic, systemic approach focuses on common crash types and effective solutions, prioritizing locations with the most risk and implementing solutions across the system where possible. To focus on common crash types, we found that just seven types of crashes account for 62% of crashes on the high-risk network. To prioritize locations with the most risk, many of our actions rely on broad implementation, first across the high-risk network, which has five times the risk of Boulder's entire arterial street network as a whole, then on the remaining city streets. For this reason, many of the recommended countermeasures are focused where high volumes of pedestrian and bicyclist activity exists. Next slide, please. You've seen our high network before in your packet, but we wanted to point out these interesting statistics that reinforce how focusing on this limited number of streets will have an outsized impact on reducing fatal and serious injury crashes. The statistics are listed there on the slides. As you can see, 7% of city streets, we found, had 48% of our fatal and serious injury crashes. Next slide, please. We also wanted to reiterate how the high-risk network overlaps closely with many core arterial network corridors, such as Baseline, Iris, and Folsom, so we hope that through implementation of the core arterial network, many of these Vision Zero recommendations will be built out. I also want to reiterate and emphasize here the many other concurrent work plan items of the Transportation and Mobility Department that are also advancing safety in addition to the action plan, things such as the ADA Transition Plan and the Pavement Management Program Mobility Enhancements, for example. You'll see on the map on the right that much of our high-risk network also overlaps with the Denver Regional Council of Government's High Injury Network, which is an important tool for allocating regional safety funding. There remains a gap in funding required to implement many of the higher-cost projects that the updated action plan identifies. While the Transportation and Mobility Department has about $250,000 annually toward Vision Zero, the cost of higher-cost projects can be hundreds of thousands of dollars each. Next slide, please. I mentioned that there are seven crash types that account for 62% of severe crashes on the high-risk network. These include things like running red lights, making left and right turns, and involve vulnerable roadway users getting hit while crossing the street or driveways along a multi-use path. Next slide, please. Here are some of the engineering solutions that the action plan recommends implementing more broadly across the transportation system. In some cases, there are multiple solutions for a given crash type. The plan is focused on action, and that mostly takes the shape of projects. In some cases, actions include process or guideline updates and experimentation and evaluation of solutions. The guidelines planned to be reviewed or updated as part of the action plan include the pedestrian crossing treatment installation guidelines and the signal timing practices. Next slide, please. The action plan itself is divided into four categories of actions encompassing a total of 20 actions. The categories are implementing engineering solutions, which has nine actions, pairing engineering solutions with education and enforcement, which has six actions, improving the city's internal Vision Zero practices, which has two actions, and improving Vision Zero data and transparency, which has three actions. Next slide, please. This slide focuses a bit more on the engineering actions. First, the broad implementation of several different countermeasures according to the systemic safety approach. These are things such as leading pedestrian intervals, no right turn on red prohibitions, protecting left turns, green pavement markings, and right turn slip lane improvements. In many cases, we want to update relevant city practices and guidelines to ensure that our systemic implementation of these treatments is uniform and will most effectively manage risk across the system. We also plan to leverage our core arterial network improvements to further address Vision Zero needs along our major arterial corridors. Speed management is also an important tool citywide, and this year, we are beginning to update our speed limit setting and signing practices. In some cases, we will be experimenting and evaluating with different solution options where good research on solutions is not available. This is the case with right turn slip lanes, for example. Lastly, we have an additional set of low- and higher-cost solutions that are location-specific. These solutions are different in type to the systemic treatments but address safety needs that arose from analysis of the high-risk network corridors. Next slide, please. I mentioned it briefly earlier, but I wanted to highlight here how I mentioned it briefly earlier, but I wanted to highlight here how we employed several strategies to elevate equity through our work. During our community engagement, we made a significant effort to engage Spanish-speaking people in Boulder. We translated the vast majority of our public-facing materials and surveys. Additionally, we participated in a Spanish-language outreach event at the San Lazaro Mobile Home Park. In the plan itself, we used the city's Racial Equity Index to prioritize low-cost and higher-cost location-specific projects. Next slide, please. Aside from the action plan, I want to again mention the many concurrent projects and programs that will also work toward achieving Vision Zero. Keep in mind, again, that things such as the Core Arterial Network, ADA Transition Plan, and the Pavement Management Program Mobility Enhancements are all ongoing work plan items that further serve to advance the city's Vision Zero goals and work to improve comfort and safety for all modes and abilities. Next slide, please. I could certainly present for much longer on the details of this plan, but I want to leave plenty of time for your questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Devin. I think that was the perfect length for that presentation, packed with information but without too many details, so really appreciate that. Appreciate all the work the department's doing. Questions? And, well, just to clarify, you're not looking for feedback per se, right? This is an opportunity to learn more, but if people also want to throw out a couple of comments, they're welcome to. But let's start with any questions we have for city staff. Matt?
Thank you, guys, for that presentation, and I really appreciate the tactics used to sort of think about how to really specifically target and let that money, that we do have the limited resources, go as far as possible to really make sure we don't just put all our eggs in one single location and really spread out the reduction of crashes. So I appreciate the thoughtfulness of that and in the long runway to get this done and trying to get out to 2027. A couple of questions I have. One is, I'm just sort of curious where the action plan fits into maybe the department pie chart, more or less. I'm looking at Natalie in terms of, I know we got CAN, and we got this, and I'm just curious how much meat is maybe left on the bone? Because if you think of how much we got left on CAN and this, are we in a place where, you know, in the next year or two, we're kind of capped out? Or are we in a place to think about maybe those larger infrastructure improvements, increasing bike lanes at CAN 2.0? I just don't know how much of the pie this takes up, because there's so many little projects. I'm just sort of curious.
Yeah, it's a good question. So I think to Devin's point, there's a lot of work within the department that we're already doing that encompasses what's been identified in the plan. There will be certainly opportunities for us to have, you know, more specific action items that are identified that we're focusing on. Say, for example, the right turn bypass lanes. That could be a potentially, like, a more specific project that wouldn't necessarily be resolved in other, with other projects or programs that were already on the work plan. But certainly, as we go to improve corridors for the core arterial network, many of the things that have been identified in the plan would be addressed through those types of corridor-wide improvements. But we've also been having conversation around the federal infrastructure bill and the opportunity with Safe Streets for All, where we could potentially look at trying to tackle a lot of the things that have been identified in the plan, but in a more corridor-based approach that also helps further the core arterial network work. So we're trying to think about how can we kind of do it all, but with limited resources. So that's certainly on our minds. But I think everything that we're doing is furthering our action plan, and we'll just continue doing that work.
Great, thank you. My other question, just sort of had referenced right turn slip lanes, and just sort of I wanted to throw the question out in terms of thinking about maybe pausing construction on new right turn slip lanes, at least until the study's completed, and then that informs us where to go forward. Just, I'm a little concerned about if we are in a position to be building anything that is still intrinsically dangerous until we study and figure out what are the treatments? How do we fix it? Or I think in the memo it said we might consider removing them in those right circumstances. So I just wanted to sort of toss, throw that out there to see if there's interest in doing that, to make sure we're not building the infrastructure we would otherwise be thinking about removing.
Yeah, I mean, I think I can broadly say we don't have plans to build more right turn bypass lanes. That was really something that was honestly looked to as a safety mitigation measure a couple decades ago, and I think we're seeing that there's potentially more opportunities for harm in those areas through our analysis, and so we don't have plans to build more of those. And as we've identified, there potentially could be opportunities that we look at, how do we actually mitigate some of what's going on out there in those instances? And there would be, Devin and the team has talked a lot about kind of more short-term solutions that we could potentially do that are more low-cost, and then there's opportunities that are more long-term. I don't know if you want to speak to the Broadway University example?
Yeah, thank you, Natalie. Just for your awareness, the Broadway University location is a location that did have an identified crash trend of people getting hit at that location with the northbound right turn movement and the path users. And we had applied through the Highway Safety Improvement Program to get funding for that location. It was not granted Highway Safety Improvement Program funding, but CDOT Region Four still thought it was a worthy project and gave the city funding to complete a project there, which the project will be to signalize the northbound right turn slip lane, and that should begin design next year.
And I'll just say, you know, that's a really great opportunity for us to address kind of an issue there, but that's a very expensive solution, and we wouldn't be able to do that across the system. I don't know how many right turn bypass lanes we have, but a lot. So we need to also be thinking about what can we do that's more low-cost and short-term.
Do you mind if I ask a follow-up question there? Do you mind just explaining what you mean by signalizing the right turn bypass lane? Because I'm trying to think of an example where we had that.
Certainly. One example that we have is Broadway and Rayleigh. That was one that was done just within the past two years. And essentially, what it means is you would put a signal pole on the island and then likely another signal pole on the right side as you're making the right turn, and both would just have either a red-yellow-green indication or a red-yellow-green arrow indication.
Okay, thanks for explaining that. Go ahead.
I think, I know you answered my question. It's good to know that there aren't any of these in the pipeline to make, and we're not putting ourselves further behind the eight ball. And I appreciate the treatments that are going to go to the existing ones and look forward to the conclusion of the study, because I don't know, I've been, I've had two near-misses in a right turn slip lane. I probably know a few people, we've all known someone that's had one, so these are something that impacts just about anybody who's walked or been on a bike, so appreciate the work on that.
Other questions? Lauren, and then Bob?
Sort of in a similar vein, where we have, I appreciated some of the changes that might be made for where streets cross or where there are turns crossing multi-use paths, and I think a lot of those were also somewhat expensive to implement. But have we updated our design standards so that at least new versions of those would follow the best practices?
Yes, a component of the recent DCS update was to have design drawings that indicate a raised crossing at multi-use paths.
Could you just explain DCS for?
Oh, I'm sorry, the Design and Construction Standards. Those are the standards that guide, I guess, construction and completion of new development projects within the city. And so there are a series of standards that engineers within the city use to guide how things are designed and built. So we do now include a lot more discussion in the updated Design and Construction Standards related to raised crossings, which are a proven safety countermeasure for slowing down speeds when turns are made across multi-use paths.
It also mentioned sort of separating it back from the street. Is that also part of the Design and Construction Standards?
I do not recall off the top of my head, but that is what is referred to in this industry as a bend-out path design. And the idea behind that is it gives space for an exiting vehicle to first yield to the multi-use path crossing and look for path users, and then proceed forward, and there's enough distance in advance of the path that that motorist can then focus on completing their right or left turning movement and not be in conflict with path users.
I guess, and then signage, I just hear all the time, there's so much confusion in the community about, like, what are these big sidewalks and why are people going the wrong direction on them? So is signage also part of that, or is that something that we need to look at in sort of more of a corridor treatment rather than?
Signage, to an extent, as you noted, has already been broadly deployed on our multi-use path system, and the sign that we often use at the intersecting driveways is the two-way crossing sign, and it's intended to remind motorists to look both ways before they make their turn. Because often what happens is the motorist gets fixated on looking left to make their right turn, and if a path user's approaching from that direction, there can be a conflict sometimes.
Do we have any evidence of how effective those are at encouraging people to look both
I don't know that we do. I can't recall when they were implemented in the city, but certainly, as I had pointed out, we have seen a slight decrease since 2014 in the number of severe crashes in the city.
Thank you. And then I was also wondering about, you know, particularly where we're looking to reduce speeds and if there are any overlaps with streets that we're looking to do that on and areas of town where we're looking at trying to reduce Heat Island effect, and if we might be looking at design, things like using street trees as a calming effect on traffic patterns? And if that's something that we're trying to dovetail in terms of different work efforts or not.
That's a really good question and observation. I, do you have anything to add on that, Natalie? Not to my knowledge, but it certainly is something I think that is being more broadly encouraged in the design community to make more complete streets and to incorporate natural elements that can facilitate drainage and provide shade. And it is noted through our studies that having narrower streets as well as streets with more mature trees that present a narrower look and visual corridor do tend to have slower speeds.
Yeah, and I'll just add, I mean, I think traditionally, as we used to do corridor planning and corridor design, we would certainly approach it to look at how can we potentially rebuild the whole street curb-to-curb to incorporate those types of, that frankly, that kind of planning and design is just very expensive, and so we've been trying to pivot to a more, like, incremental approach to improving our corridors, and that doesn't always give us the opportunity to redesign a street from curb to curb. So a lot of the opportunities we have to take are, like, what's already there in the right-of-way, unless we have substantial funding and it's a pretty massive corridor project that we're able to go in and completely rebuild. So when those opportunities are available, we certainly do.
I was just thinking there might also be the dual benefit of, I think you had mentioned trying to do some of these updates in particularly neighborhoods and things that aren't necessarily getting the same kind of investment, and that that might also overlap, I believe, with where we're trying to focus spending on street trees for Heat Island issues as well.
Yeah, that makes sense. Thanks.
I think it's for you, Natalie. I live right off Iris Avenue, and so people in the neighborhood are kind of freaking out that the Iris Avenue Transportation Improvement Project, which we're just getting launched, our plan is, our evil plan is to narrow Iris from four lanes to two. Can you say out loud that it's not our plan to narrow Iris from four lanes to two between 28th and Broadway?
I can say out loud that we have no plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Just stop talking right now.
Thanks for the presentation, and thank you so much for all the work that's gone into these changes. I'm really eager for them. One of the things that I was just wondering about is just the demographics of people in our community who are severely injured or killed in crashes. I think youth are on my mind tonight. Motor vehicle crashes are, in many cases, one of the top causes of death in children and adolescents. Do we see the same trends here in our city? And if so, are we targeting any changes on increasing the safety of our youth? Thanks.
Yeah, thank you for that question, Councilmember Spear. I would point back, to some extent, to the Safe Streets Boulder report. That did have a bit more detailed information as far as the demographics and ages of those who are involved in crashes. I think from the point of view of who is most often determined to be the at-fault motorist, we find quite frequently that it's the males who are between, like, 18 and 24 years old are often the ones that are speeding or distracted or under the influence while driving and are causing crashes. And then we did see and note trends as well in our older population, our 65 and over population, being kind of overrepresented in crashes. I, I'm waiting for my computer to get memory up, but, thanks, Charlie. Related to the youth, I don't know that we found that they were overrepresented in any way, but I know that that is, they are certainly folks that can be, I would say, influential in how we get the message out about safety. So thank you for bringing that up as well.
Anything else? Right, seeing none. I will just give you all an enormous thank you for the incredible work that you're doing in this area. I'll say this has come so far. Oh, wait, no, no, Tara, Tara, Tara's got a hand up.
Can I just give a shout-out that I saw lighting in underpasses on that list? I can now stop bothering Natalie.
Great point. We look forward to more lighting in underpasses. Anyway, just in the seven-odd years I've been on council, this has come so far. I remember when we first got started, it was called Towards Vision Zero, so we weren't quite ready to have a vision of zero. We were working towards it. And so there have been so many improvements that have been made, and excited to see so many more coming up the next couple of years. So really appreciative for the groundbreaking work that you all are doing here.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Take care. All right. So it is 9:25. We have three items left. So the first one is pegged at 30 minutes on the discussion of overdose prevention centers, and then a process update on Senate Bill 213, which actually, I think we could do that in five minutes, and then a Library District Board of Trustees upstate, which is probably three minutes. But are folks okay with us proceeding with what's left on the agenda?
Yep.
Okay, great. So Emily, if you could take us in, please.
Next on our agenda, we have Item 8A, which is a discussion on HB 23-1202, Local Option to Operate Overdose Prevention Centers.
Good evening, Council. Carl Castillo, Chief Policy Advisor for the City of Boulder. I guess I wanted to just start off, as far as a transition from the last conversation, to mention that we had some good news yesterday. A bill that we've been working on, one of your priorities, that would expand the authority for the city to use photo speed enforcement, did pass at a committee, in the Senate Committee. That was anything but a guarantee. We worked with Bicycle Colorado, who's a prime backer, and with the sponsor, Senator Faith Winter, to help make some changes, to help protect our interests, and we had two members, we had Joe Van, our photo enforcement supervisor, testify yesterday, as well as Trinny Wilterton from the Transportation Advisory Board. They both had a complimentary story, so anyway, feel really good about that. And by that, I shouldn't jinx it and suggest that we know it's going to pass, but we're going to work hard. To the item of HB 1202, I don't even have a presentation, because I think the memo probably has explained everything you need, and I want to make sure that you have the opportunity to discuss it. Bottom line, this is a bill that would authorize cities to provide overdose prevention centers, is the way it's been termed in the bill. We took a position on it sometime between February 15th and March 1st. February 15th is when it was introduced. A few days before March 1st, I reviewed it along with Wendy Schwartz, who is on the line. She is our Human Services Manager, our Policy Advisor, excuse me. We also did check with the county's Public Health Department. Based on that and based on our review of the policy statement, particularly the position that would have a support local control, we did take a position of support. So I want to acknowledge that right now, because there has been questions about whether the city had taken a position. So consistent with council's expectations, we do, as always, use your policy statement to inform positions, and that's what we did here. However, I'd heard fairly quickly afterwards that there was questions- heard fairly quickly afterwards that there was questions about whether it was an appropriate interpretation of the policy statement, whether in fact, local control was always something we should seek or sometimes it's maybe, you know, not necessarily what we want. So I convened the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee and the committee made it clear that from a process perspective, they were concerned that this is the kind of bill that should have received more vetting from the committee at a minimum, if not the full council. So that's why we're here today. They actually did consider the item. They asked us to retain the position of support, but to do so passively, so no longer to lobby on it, certainly no more testimony. I will mention that the bill did pass the House. It is pending before the Senate. It is not scheduled for a hearing as of today. So I don't know what its outlook is at the Senate. That is by way of saying that any position that we take could be influential in trying to shape our own senators' perspective on it. So the item is for you to discuss whether or not, basically, I guess it's really a question of how you'd like to respond to the committee's recommendation of continuing to support it, which has been made, and whether you have any questions. And I'd really like to defer to the committee to allow them to have conversations on this with the rest of the council.
Thanks Carl for introducing that. And just to be clear, I think we're looking to get a read from council on whether or not to support this bill or if we were to support it, if we would ask for any amendments. And I'll just mention that the IGA committee at that time was Rachel, Matt, Lauren, and myself. Since then, Rachel has left the committee and Tara's joined up. This was before that happened. And so there was, I think, all four of us said, yeah, this seems like something we should support, but let's take it to the council for their consideration as a whole. So if we could just, if people could ask any questions that they have and then maybe we can have a quick discussion on where to go with this. Bob?
Thanks Carl. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on what the bill does because you mentioned local control a few times. I appreciate that. So is there currently under Colorado law, a preemption or prohibition by the state prohibiting cities from having these types of things? Is that right?
That has certainly been implied. It's actually a question I never looked up to see if it's in fact in the law books, but I do know that the city of Denver has had this on the books and it's kind of been like a trigger ordinance that as soon as they interpret the state law as allowing it, they would move forward. So I have not done the individual research or even heard of a state law preventing it, but it's been an assumption and it's one that's been made by Denver. In other words, Denver has passed an ordinance that would allow them to proceed with opening up a overdose prevention center pending the authority to be, the authority given to them by the state. So I'm afraid that might not answer, based on the quizzical look that you're giving me.
Carl, I feel like it's safe to say that the state does preempt this. We might not be able to point to the specific code, but since Denver has felt like they are unable to do one without state authorization.
I would bet 99.99%. That's the case, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's pretty fair to say. Sandra, did you?
Yeah, I think I'll just add too that I think that there has been some influence by the federal government as well in terms of whether or not having a location like this would be providing controlled substances to individuals, which would be illegal. And so I think in the past, there's been some pressure from the federal government coming down on these locations. And I don't know what the situation is now. It may be changing, but I think that that's part of the history here.
Do you have anything else?
No, I'm still a little bit confused because I, same as the federal government, I appreciate that Sandra. I thought, I always presumed that home rule cities could kind of do whatever they wanted as long as it wasn't prevented by the state. Is that a, is that probably an overstatement of the law, but is that generally true? It's kind of a tenth.
As long as it's a home rule, local issue, and if it's a mixed use issue, then as long as it doesn't conflict with the state law.
Right, right. So I'm kind of confused why the state had to give cities permission to do this in the first place, but it doesn't matter. The bill's the bill. I just was kind of confused about the reason, yeah.
So I just received a text from former Representative Jonathan Singer, who actually had ran a bill on justice issue a couple of years ago. And it's based on a nuisance issue relating to otherwise illegal activity occurring in a particular location. So that's his response. I will also say that knowing that it is arguably illegal at the federal level, much like the city has chosen to, I mean, the state has chosen to legalize marijuana and mushrooms now, it may be a way of validating and giving cover for cities to do something that they might otherwise feel has questionable authority at the federal level.
Yeah, I guess I'm a little confused about why a state bill permitting cities to do something that the federal government doesn't like gets the cities out of Dutch with the federal government. It seems like you're still up seeing problem, but we can debate this. This is an interesting argument, but I was just kind of curious, the reason for the bill in the first place, if there was a prohibition that was being lifted, or maybe it just sounds like maybe more of a clarification. Okay.
All I can say is, I did go to the hearing and I heard hours of testimony and not one person mentioned the explicit prohibition that's on the books. So all I am left to assume is that it is, at the very least, cities do not feel comfortable proceeding without such authority and perhaps illegal.
Got it. Thanks. And, yeah, Mark?
Yeah, if I could get some information, is this bill agnostic in terms of the types of drugs that we would be permitted to set up overdose prevention centers for? Is there any distinction, for instance, between heroin or methamphetamine in terms of what we would be permitted to do?
So my read of the bill is it is agnostic. Now that being said, one of the services that it is intended to offer is to allow people to have their drugs tested to make sure it does not contain, what's the term? What's the?
Fentanyl?
The one that kills people right away.
Fentanyl.
Fentanyl. So while the bill does not specify which drugs they'd be allowed to use, what it does specify, Councilmember Wallach, is that the centers would not be providing such drug, but the person would have to bring in their own drug. So I know that sounds kind of odd to say.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Nicole?
I just had one question. I was just trying to remember back to being in the committee. And if I'm remembering correctly, the bill had pretty broad support, right? That it really was kind of a party line vote, that it was sort of all the Democrats regardless of where they, you know, fall on the political spectrum were supporting. And the three folks who were voting again against it were the Republicans. Is that, am I remembering correctly?
I think that is correct. And as you will see from the, in your memo, I've listed the sponsors, which is pretty much the Democrats and quite a few of them. Yeah, so I think it's fair to say that this is a heavily supported by the Democrats and opposed by Republicans.
Thank you.
Yep. Go ahead.
So I think for the community that's listening at 9:30, or we'll read about it tomorrow, and maybe just for my colleagues, just in terms of where the meeting was, I just say, maybe I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, certainly myself, is just that this is a right to local control, but doesn't necessarily mean we have to exercise it. And so I think the support mechanism here is to think of, well, look, our friends in Denver feel they need this. Why would we stand in their way if it's in need of theirs? So I don't think this means that, just by us supporting it, means that, you know, come January 1, 2024, we're lifting up an overdose center here in Boulder. I would argue that we probably would want to wait and see and look at Denver and any other places, long before we're looking to do that ourselves. These centers usually need to be in heavily more urban environments, larger cities. Boulder doesn't necessarily fit the regular index from which these would be, but it doesn't mean we wouldn't do it in the future. But I think preserving the right to have that is what's important. So I think it's an important distinction. Much like we asked of communities when we wanted ranked choice voting, a lot of cities said, we don't want it, but we're not going to stand in your way of doing it. And so they still supported the bill. So I think there's a consistency of logic that we would like to sort of stay with.
Matt, thanks for that. I think that was the consensus of the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee was pretty much just what you said. Yeah. Lauren, yeah, do you want to expand?
Yeah, so Denver right now, I believe, is experiencing more than one overdose death a day. You know, this is a nationwide epidemic. And while there haven't been a large number of these centers in this country, the evidence is pretty, supports strongly that they do help with overdose deaths and reducing those. So, but like Matt said, you know, it's less about us looking to put one of these in Boulder. And, you know, my support was largely about, there are lots of things that different communities care passionately about. And this is something that Denver has been trying to do and a direction that they want to try to help with, you know, help reduce death in their community. And so I think that it's really important, if, you know, especially for the next thing that comes in front of Boulder, that we would want to have them support us as well. And so in that partnership, trying to help support these really important things for our surrounding communities as well.
Very good. Tara?
But isn't it also about a highly, I'm not going to say contentious, emotional subject for a lot of people? We say that it's, oh, well, do what you want to do, Denver. We support you. But it's, I think this falls into a different category where there's a fair amount of emotion and opinion. And so the question is, is tonight, should we discuss alternatives to saying yes, just because we, maybe me, might say yes, but with guardrails? Or do I forget my two-minute speech and not even say it because we're just voting on saying yes, Denver, do whatever you want? I personally don't, I think once we say yes to them, then we are also opening up the door to maybe saying yes here. And so I think it's worthy to discuss, but also if nobody wants to discuss it, you know, I don't have to. Does that make sense? Or am I so sick that I'm not even making sense? I don't know.
Well, I guess Tara, in part, but I don't think we're going to decide tonight whether or not we think we should open one in Boulder. But if you wanted to propose either saying no to supporting it or an amendment that we might propose instead, feel free to put that forward.
I might as well. I worked like, pretty much like two hours on this thing. I would hate to have lost that time to nothing. But you tell me when you want me to do that.
You have the floor. Can we, or do you want to say something first, Rachel?
I'm happy to say what I was going to say, which is that I do feel it's a little bit hypocritical to say like, we just support local control because we don't always. We have another issue, I believe, coming right down the pike here, where we're going against local control. So I think in frankness, like, I would only support, like, moving forward with the argument of local control if I support the thing that the local control is about. So for example, if the state passes an assault weapons ban and then 10 years from now, we want local control for that, I don't want it. I'm going to want the assault weapons ban. So I think we should be a little bit more crystal clear that if we are supporting this, we are sort of signaling to the community, yeah, we think we might be interested in this and kind of not dance around it because I think that's what we would be doing. It's kind of to Tara's point. And maybe if I'm hearing everyone correctly, what we want is for Denver to do it. So maybe that's an amendment Tara would like to ask for. I don't know. Like, yeah, we support that for Denver. Maybe we support it here, but I think we're going to do it. Let's just be clear on what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Fair point. We got Mark's hand up and then maybe Tara will come back to you.
Yeah, I kind of agree with Rachel on this. I think it's, I tend to be very protective of local control, but not always. And there are things that you don't necessarily want to have control over. I think it's a little disingenuous for us to say, we're doing this as a favor to our friends in Denver. We have no intention of doing anything here. We just want the, we'll take all the control, but we don't really want to do anything other than to be supportive of our, you know, good friends to the South. If we're going to support this, we're basically signaling to the community that we support this, not just Denver's use of this, but this option. And I don't know how anybody else feels. I think it's, I would find that the concept of a heroin overdose prevention center, a little more palatable than a methamphetamine overdose prevention center because in the latter case, you're basically facilitating the consumption of methamphetamine. And that's not something we want. We've seen the consequences in this community up and down the line as to what methamphetamine does to its victims and does to the larger community. And the sort of the optics of setting up a center, you know, come on in and take your dose here is very poor to me. And I'm not really prepared to say to the community that that's the direction we want to go in. But if we're opening it up and supporting this legislation, I think that's where we're going. We're saying this is a good thing, not just that it's for our friends and we're doing them a solid down in Denver. We're basically saying this is a good thing. And even if we're not doing it now, we'll probably want to do it later. And I think that conversation needs to be had before we support this legislation. Because if that's our goal, if that's our objective, then let's say that to the community. But not, let's not kind of slink around and say, we're just being friendly neighbors and we'll take the freedom and we'll deal with it later. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Tara, do you mind if I respond to the last couple of comments before I come back to you?
Nope.
Yeah, so Rachel, Mark, you both raised good points. And I think what I would say is, I don't think if we support this tonight, I think what I would be thinking about is not just that we're doing Denver a favor, because it is something that we might want to consider for the community at some point down the road, but that I would look to Denver to be the pioneer here and look at their success or failure with it before deciding whether it would be a good choice for Boulder. So I would not be saying by supporting this, absolutely, within a couple of years, we'll do one in Boulder. I would say, let's let Denver lead and then learn from them. So that's what I'm thinking. Yep, sure, Bob.
And if I can respond to you, Mayor, that to me is a slim read on which to support our support of this bill. We don't know what it's going to mean. We don't know how it's going to work, but it sounds good. And that to me is not good governance.
Fair point. Bob?
I'm going to stand on that slim read because I agree with Aaron. And I don't want anybody to interpret my support of this bill to mean that I am in favor of a safe injection site in Boulder. That is a months-long, if not years-long evaluation that we would have to do. We'd have to have public health experts come in and tell us the pros and cons of this. We need to listen to the community. We have to make a decision on this the next few weeks, I think, Carl, because it's already been passed by one house. It's going to go to another house. We either support it or we don't. And I would not want any of my council colleagues or anyone in the community to interpret my support of this bill as supporting the opening of a safe injection site. That's a completely different discussion. I believe in local control. I think this is another example of local control. If Denver wants to do this, that's their business. And so I think there is a distinction between supporting the bill and making a long-term, well-considered decision about safe injection sites, which we're not doing tonight.
Very good. Tara?
Are we ready for this?
Cause you haven't said anything yet, if you want to. All right, Tara, we'll come back to you because you wanted to suggest something perhaps, or?
Who, me?
Yeah, or not. You don't need to.
Yes, I do. I do. I do. I do. I do.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so first, a lot of you know, or maybe you don't, but Aaron does, that I spent a long time thinking about this. And I started out being a definite no-go because at first I felt the government shouldn't really be allowing the use of illegal drugs in a government facility. It was enabling and something didn't feel right about it, to me. But then, I talked to a lot of medical professionals, like a hospital executive in Sydney, Australia, involved in that safe injection site there, and some physicians also. And they all said, the health professionals, that they do save lives and there are no overdoses in those facilities. And they prevent infections from dirty needles. And there have been skyrocketing deaths, Lauren said, it's true, from overdose in our country. And so I think mentioning that is an important fact. However, the Sydney Hospital Executive said they have to be managed well. And by that, I just want to talk about guardrails for a second. So we put up guardrails because we're driving down the highway and there's people driving on the other part of the road. And we put up that guardrail to protect the people in the opposite lane so that if we flip over or ride into the wrong, if we ride into if we ride into the wrong lane to the opposite end, we would kill ourselves and we would kill a lot of people. So that's where the term guardrails came. And I think it really applies here about killing ourselves and killing other people. So, um, that's why I would only be in favor of this, this House bill if we had these guardrails set up. Um, first of all, if they're strategically placed in minimum negative, uh, place to minimize negative impacts in neighborhoods, for instance, not in residential neighborhoods, not near schools or stores. If you think about Kensington, Philadelphia, where it is a just terrible, it's just so sad what's happened there. People are just walking up and down the street shooting up. It's dangerous. It's sad. There's crime, everything. That's the kind of place that would do well with a safe injection site. The neighborhood would probably improve. But yet in the Greater Harlem Coalition Newsletter, neighbors were upset in Harlem, living near On Point's Harlem Injection Site, expressed daily fear of the dealers and users who swarm the block. So outside the facility, is there sometimes crime if it's either not managed well, or let's say law enforcement doesn't take, uh, you know, is it a partner in there? I would say it could be a real problem. Um, now if it was up to me, and it's not up to me, um, I would say if we're gonna have safe injection sites, then it should be mandatory for people who take drugs, um, in the, out in the open to go to those safe injection sites. I, I studied a lot of European countries and they have no to- they have zero tolerance policies for o- open construction of drugs, which means that addicts will actually take drugs inside the safe injec- and safe injection site because they will be arrested if they use drugs outside of the facility on the street. So no consumption of drugs in our public spaces is important to me. I personally don't think that's asking, uh, too much. And just a s- quick story is, a quick story, I promise.
Quick.
I was walking up the creek path towards the high school, towards the arboretum, and there was, um, a, a large tent encampment right by the, um, fence of, by the high school field. And the people were sitting outside their tents, smoking meth, you know, making the meth, smoking the meth. It was not good. So if that's the case, can we say that, no, you're not allowed to take drugs in full view in our public spaces, uh, because there's a safe injection site? I don't know that that is what is gonna be, you know, what people are gonna agree to. Um, I just have a few more points and then I'll move it, I'll move it over to Nicole. Um, I feel, I really feel strongly that prevention and harm, harm reduction and treatment should be combined with law enforcement, cooperation between law enforcement, healthcare and social services. As far as Europe goes, data from these other countries has to be taken in full account. Many co- countries, like I said, have zero tolerance for consuming drugs outside the safe injection sites. So I believe mandatory participa- participation might be key. In Vancouver, outside that facility, as many of you know, people are shooting up, shooting up their friends and dealing drugs. Um, the Vancouver Police Department supported the opening of that injection site and they still support it to this day. Um, so that's another interesting thing we can discuss as well when we really do talk about this. Um, the former mayor of Vancouver said that they knew that the SIS cannot be run without the cooperation of the police, especially the frontline officers that patrol those streets and alleys near there. So that's an important thing to me. Next, I would want to couple the site with wraparound services, which we talked a lot about tonight. Counseling, drug addiction services, so we can tackle the root causes of people needing the site to use drugs in the first place. I'm sure we all agree that, that really the, that tackling the root causes is the most important thing. And lastly, it definitely takes resources. And how do we, well, how do we prioritize our limited funding? We need detox centers badly. We need rehab centers badly. We need mental health outpatient and inpatient units really badly. And what are we gonna do about staff? We have such a staff shortage that I heard that in our mental health in, um, inpatient facility, over a hundred beds are empty because we, we have staffing shortages. So the last thing that I would want to do is say yes to staff to safe injection sites, then we don't have the staff for it and it goes awry. Um, so I'm just gonna end with, I'm not against if it was called a pilot program in Denver with those guardrails, because let's face it, you know, safe injection sites, they really do save lives. And so many lives are lost these days from overdoses. Um, and I would say to people that are really against it, if you have a loved one that has died from an overdose, I would think that you would wish that they took those drugs in a safe injection site because it would give them more time to get clean. But I really, I would only vote for it if I had the, we had those particular guardrails in place that I mentioned. Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Tara. You've been doing your homework. There are all kinds of citations and examples there. So, uh, I'm gonna turn to Carl here. Um, so appreciate some of the comments, there are, or all the comments that have been made. So Carl, in terms of what you're looking for from us tonight, is, is this, would this be like a not a five to continue the position of support that, that the city has already been taken? Uh, or, or are you looking for something different from us? What, what, what are you thinking?
I'm open to whatever you want to provide me, but certainly a not a five or six or seven, as the case may be, is totally appropriate. And that would be helpful. And with that not a five, I would take the position of support and I would enact, I would activate it. In other words, we would, uh, actually lobby, I'd lobby it. I wouldn't say it's a priority for us. I mean, clearly it's not as a priority. And I, I, I also, uh, don't expect the council wants necessarily for us to make this, you know, to create any confusion that this is something that, you know, is a priority for us. Because after all, that could be read as, uh, uh, we're ready to use that authority, when I'm clearly hearing that's not the case. And by the way, it is worth noting, and for the public in particular, that our staff has no intention, should this, this bill pass and this authority be granted, to come to you and recommend an overdose prevention center to be entered. Um, Wendy Schwartz, who is available for any questions, has detailed the, uh, extensive process that we have to look at, uh, appropriate measures along these lines. And this is not on our radar.
That's, that's helpful. And i- if, if we take this step, just a moment, Jenny, if you don't mind, uh, if we take this step, could we incorporate in our efforts some of the i- issues that Tara brought up around citing and wraparound services and, and things that facilities like this might need?
Yeah, that's a really interesting idea. And I'd be happy to continue to work with Tara to get some more ideas because, um, you know, what I'm hearing is, um, this bill could be improved perhaps. Uh, there may be some, uh, some guardrails, as she suggested, on, and where these could be, uh, yeah. So, so that's a great idea and I could certainly do that.
Yeah, and to explore those possibilities. Um, Junie?
Thank you so much. I just wanted to make the comment, I will not be voting on this not a five because of my work and community members. But I just wanted to note as well, this is the first time in four years or three and a half years since I've been on council that we have had a lengthy discussion about a particular bill. Because yeah, that is a signal to community of what the city intends to do. So, thank you.
All right. So can I'm, yeah, Nicole?
I just wanted to say that, you know, one of the things that I'm noticing here is that, uh, clearly we are ready to have a long, long and exhaustive discussion on this. And, and I think that that's, that's one of the things that the bill would allow, um, us to do at some point in the future. Not, not tomorrow, not, not in the next few months, but, you know, years down the road. Um, and, you know, I think if Denver's gonna go first, cool. Um, and, you know, if we think that these prevention centers are gonna facilitate, um, use of drugs, then maybe folks will go to Denver, um, to use. And, and that might relate to some of the issues that we're having here, um, if that's what we think is gonna happen. So, uh, anyway, so I, I, I will be, um, supportive of a support position on this bill.
Thanks. And can we move along? Or Rachel, do you have something else?
Just gonna wonder, like, if there's no, if there's anything scheduled, can this just go back to the subcommittee to sort of, like, can we say, you know, general support, but like, look at it more and, and come up with some guardrails? And also to, to my suggestion to Tara, I think when California considered, um, these sites, they did specify, like, three cities that were gonna pilot it first. So I, I don't think it's outside the realm that it could be Denver and, and maybe another city or two. But I think that is an option the subcommittee could look at.
I think the subcommittee already weighed in. So I, do, do you think we need to go back to the subcommittee?
That was kinda to Carl's point about, like, we could talk about the guardrails. And so I don't, I don't, maybe, maybe we don't need it.
I don't know that we need to get to that level of detail, frankly. But Carl, are you, or would you be okay with us just doing, checking on a not a five tonight?
Yes. And when we, and the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee meets on the 21st, if the bill is still around and there's still possibilities for amendments, we certainly can discuss guardrails, um, at that point as well.
Great.
But I have a question. How do I vote then? If I would only vote yes if there were guardrails, but no if the bill passed as it was?
I mean, it's up to you, Tara. I guess with you, your message has been communicated and Carl would be, uh, passing some of those concerns along as part of the process, but there's no, no guarantees. So your, your choice. Uh, Mark?
Yeah, I would be very supportive of, of what Rachel is saying. Um, I, I don't want to dismiss that out of hand simply because it's already been looked at. I think there's, I don't know if it's a not a five, uh, sentiment in, in this council, but there's certainly enough sentiment to be looking to focus on amendments and guardrails and those types of things that will make, um, people more comfortable with the very concept of what we're talking about. I don't want to give short shrift to what, what, what Rachel said.
Point taken. We do have kind of a busy agenda at the IGA committee. So, but I, I'll tell you what, how about a not a five of whether we should proceed with the, the support position that's been described? And then I'll, I'll check in again, not a five, if people want to, uh, send it back to the IGA for further work. Is that all right?
But I think some people only want to say yes if it's with amendments, like not a five to, to support if, if the subcommittee's gonna look at amendments.
We, um, I guess I'm looking to see if we can, uh, proceed tonight, you know, with, with, with the council position and then check in after that if, if we want the IGA committee to do additional work. And people don't want to do that, that, that's fine. So can we call for that not a five there? Let's, we'll just kinda do, all right, I'm getting sort of head nods from, it looks like we got six with Junie, uh, stepping back.
Abstaining.
Abstaining, yes, abstaining. Um, and then, you know, within that, uh, how, how, what do people think about the idea of sending it to the IGA committee for a few, further work? Yeah, Nicole, do you have a comment?
I just, I, I mean, I want to be sensitive to the work of the IGA. And I know we've got this housing bill coming up, um, that feels like it's gonna be pretty intense for the IGA. So, um, I, I mean, I feel like Carl has heard some of the concerns that folks, um, may have tonight. And, you know, I know that you're in communication with folks, so I don't, I don't feel that's necessary.
Okay, Bob?
I want to pile onto that. In addition to the work of the, um, I mean, it sounds like it's unclear whether there's a prohibition right now in the state law that prohibits cities. And so if we came back with, um, a bill that said, yeah, we support it, but only if the cities do the following things. So now the state is telling the cities what they have to do. And, and so now, now we're going from a, a place where maybe it's ambiguous about whether the state has restrictions to imposing restrictions. So I, I think we either believe in local control or we don't. I think if we tell the state that you, here's a laundry list of things you have to do in order to have a safe injection site, now we do have state control and we're going exactly the opposite direction that I think the bill is intending. So I would not be in favor, um, even if the intergovernmental affairs committee has all the time in the world. I wouldn't want you spending a whole lot of time on this, cause I think it's just the opposite of what the bill is trying to do.
Yep. Real, real quick, and let's finish up.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make it three. Um, it, to, more acutely, it would be us prescribing to Denver, the first one out the gate, exactly how to run their overdose prevention center, coming from a community that's expressing that we might not be interested in doing such thing, but we will tell Denver how to do it. I, that the logic is, is backwards to me. Um, so I, I would not prescribe it. If we were looking to lift one up, I'd say, yes, let us define those rules for ourselves. But since that's not on our radar anymore, if Denver wants to figure out how they want to do it, and they're gonna be the first out the gate, awesome. But, but I, I'd leave it alone.
Okay. Uh, so how many people would like to send it on to the IGA for further work? I got, I got three, three takers. Three takers out of eight. Junie, you abstain. Uh, so...
I think we have what we need to move forward.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thanks. Um, all right, it was a, it was a little convoluted, but thanks to everybody figuring it out. Carl, um, Carl, could you give us a very quick update on the process that the Senate Bill 213, the Landesville, I will note there, actually, they've been in a hearing on this matter in the Senate since around 10 o'clock this morning and it's still going.
Is that right? Did, did you check? Cause I checked before I came up here and it was still going on.
I did just check, yeah.
Yeah, I heard they had 300 people speaking up and, uh, um, yeah. So I really have nothing to add other than the hotline message that went out today. Maybe I'll just walk you through the very basics. So you at a pre- the council at a previous meeting adopted a policy statement position, which essentially said, we're looking to support a bill of this nature. But you did provide guardrails on what it would take for you to actually, uh, support that bill. So when a bill was introduced, and, uh, one was introduced, I'm looking for the date here. Um, of course I don't have it. Um, it was, uh, brought to the Intergovernmental Affairs Committee per the request of the council. That committee met yesterday. They adopted a position of, or I should say, recommendation of support while asking for amendments. Um, according to the council agenda committees meeting, they felt that the public deserved enough time to, uh, not have this discussed tonight in substance, uh, but to delay it to the meeting on April 20th. So tonight is merely me telling you that the committee hearing is still going on. Uh, the vote will not take place tonight, nor will any amendments be, uh, introduced tonight. We expect that to occur either next Tuesday or next Thursday. In fact, neither one of them is official, but that's, that's the intel I have. And at that point, we expect the, uh, the bill to be amended quite substantially. Um, and, uh, I would say, I, I, I did share the recommendation of the committee with the governor's office. So even though this council has not taken a position on it, that is public information. And I wanted them to know that because I think the city in no situation is worse off if they are to, uh, adopt those positions, which actually are increasing local control. So, um, hopefully I got that right. Um, and I guess I will say, uh, for all listening, that, uh, I think council did get what part, a, a big part of what it wanted by adopting this policy statement position, which was a seat at the table. We've, we've attended, um, over a dozen meetings, well over a dozen meetings. Um, and they have been very receptive to our questions, to our technical feedback. Basically, we're saying, you know, have you considered how this might play out in a city like Boulder? And they are all ears. So, um, we would not have had that support. In fact, as far as I know, we're the only city that's, that's getting that attention. And it's because we telegraphed that we could support this and that conceptually we wanted to support it, but that we had to have our interests, um, addressed. So, uh, just applaud you for having the foresight to, to take that position. And, um, no, no decision is being asked of you tonight. So any questions about the process? Happy to answer them.
All right. And if I just make one additional point, Carl, thanks for that. The, so that we'll be bringing this to the whole council in two weeks for consideration. And at that time, the discussion will be informed by whatever, whatever alterations have been made in the Senate, assuming that it does pass out of committee. We'll know what those changes are at that time and our discussion can be informed by that.
We'll have had the Intergovernmental Affairs, we'll have also had a meeting prior to that.
I don't think so. No, it's, no, it's the day after.
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah, our next IGA committee's the day after.
Yeah, it's unfortunate.
I'd have Mark's hand up and then Rachel.
Yeah, just a question for Carl. Um, you, you posted a correction today saying that, that our policy was, um, support while requesting amendments. Um, exactly how does that differ from what we had originally prescribed, which was we support if amended?
Um, I'd like to defer to the mayor on that.
Yeah. So th- this was something that we talked about at the IGA committee meeting is, uh, support if amended would mean that, uh, we would refuse to support it unless, um, every detail, uh, that requests that we made were fulfilled exactly. Um, as opposed to support while asking for amendments says, this is what we'd like to see and let's negotiate on these and try to make them happen and reserve the right to continue supporting even if one or two are, are not, we don't quite get to the finish line.
Well, does it also mean that if we get none of our requested amendments, we are still supporting?
We'd have to come back, I think, in that case. But I also think that's extremely unlikely based on where the direction is of this is already headed.
Okay.
Essentially impossible.
I'll hold you to that.
Rachel, okay.
I just wanted to understand what's happening on the 20th and what can we do between now and the 20th as a city that might be different if we were making a decision tonight? And I assume that the Senate hearing will not occur before the 20th when it comes back to us?
So that's a really good question, cause I think you're looking like, what does the opportunity cost by us not taking a position tonight? Um, so- So the possibility to testify has ended today. It will be a committee vote without any additional testimony from the public. So it will then go to Senate appropriations and probably Senate finance. Testimony there is usually limited to the appropriations and the fiscal note that's been added, so that's not a place for substantive comments. Then it'll be heard by the full Senate, second reading, and then third reading. So it's basically a recorded vote, or actually, a non-recorded vote, and then a recorded vote. So in terms of testimony in that timeframe, I don't expect we will have lost anything. Then the question really becomes, are they going to take us serious that these are amendments that we want, since it hasn't been validated by council yet? And I could only say that, as your representative, what I would convey to them is, if you want the city to support this, it would be, you'd be well-served to strongly consider these amendments. So in other words, it's, there's no guarantee that the city will support it, as Council Member Wallach said. The recommendation is support with amendments, but, you know, if the sponsor would like to be sure that we're going to support it, I think the amendments would be important. That's all I could deliver. I could also just say that until our council has an opportunity to consider this, we have no position, but a recommendation from a committee of four is significant.
And we're not changing our policy here. We don't usually have, like, public hearings or, you know, kind of have a wait, as I recall, before council would weigh in on something like this, right? So I guess I'm just trying to understand why they delay. Why are we delaying?
It's a good point. So we do have public hearings for revisions to our policy statement. That is council's direction on policy. That's council making policy and directing the, in fact, staff then connects the dots to the bill. We think of that as implementation. It's like administrative in some regards. So typically, we would not need to go even to the committee. Given the significant interest in this and controversy, we thought it was important to bring it to the committee, and for that matter, at the council agenda committee meeting, it was decided that it was also important to bring back the council for that additional feedback. That's purely a decision that the council gets to make. And I will say that because it is not even required, a nod of five would be totally fine, as it was for the last bill on 1202, because in fact, we're going up above and beyond what is typically done for the city adopting positions on bills.
Can I also add to that, Rachel? Because I think a major consideration was that if we went, you know, only about 28 hours between the IGA committee making a recommendation and the council then deciding whether to accept it, that would provide very limited time for the community to, if they wanted to send us emails or phone calls or such on the topic. And we heard that when we had the public hearing on the policy revisions, people were upset at how short the timeframe was, and this would have been much shorter than that. So making sure the community has some time to absorb this and weigh in.
Can I just add something here? Go ahead.
Well, just, given that it's not a policy change, I hear what you're saying. I don't quite get it. I hear what you're saying, and if it forfeits us any advantage in having taken a vote on it in the next two weeks, I think that's a bummer. But I think I'm hearing you say that we shouldn't lose any major...
I really don't. And I've got to say, and I'm not exaggerating, the attention that we've been given, I get calls almost daily, or I participate in calls, and they're very interested in where Boulder's at. I think, this is the governor's home city, President Fenberg really cares where we're at, those two things alone, I think, and plus the fact that we are the only city that I know of that is prepared to take a position of support. And I just think it's a very significant thing for them to say that Boulder is considering, prepared, about to take a position of support. So I think that even where we're at, we're not going, I mean, frankly, if council felt comfortable giving the position of support today, that'd make my job easier. But I'm trying to honor the fact that there's a desire to delay it, and I'm just, I really don't think it's going to limit our ability to shape things.
And if it were, you could come back to the subcommittee and ask for advice on moving forward without full counsel at that point, right? In theory?
Yeah.
That's okay. Okay.
Yes.
Quick, come on, Nicole. Nicole was up first, I think.
Yeah, just a kind of quick addition there, Rachel. At the Dr. Cog meeting last night, this bill came up, and we had a pretty robust discussion on it. I just wanted to normalize that we are not the only city that's kind of in a, needing to discuss more position. We, there was a vote that was pushed through to oppose. There were 17 directors who opposed, but there were 14 of us who had to abstain, and there were five in favor, or, sorry, five against the vote to oppose. So anyway, so I don't think we're alone. Most people are going to be deciding, at least in the Dr. Cog context, all those folks are going to have decisions in the next two weeks.
And let's wrap up here, but go ahead, Matt.
Just for everybody listening, clarity, we've talked about the Senate process, but it doesn't end there. There's another, there's more bites at the apple, and it goes to the House, more chance of testimony, more chance of amendments, more tweaking and modifying. So just know that there's still quite a bit of runway, that just because testimony today doesn't foreclose more, and once it gets past the hearing, like, we still have many bites at the apple to keep refining this. So I just want to be, just so everyone knows, that there's still plenty of runway.
Yes. Typically, I would say this could be decided before you meet next, but I fully expect that this will be debated up until the very last hour of the General Assembly. No guarantees, but this is complicated.
Okay. Well, great. Thanks, Carl, for that update on process. And so our one last thing is Library District Board of Trustees' update. Maybe, Nicole, you could give this one?
Yes, I would be happy to. Thank you. So just an update on where we are with the Library District Selection Committee. The committee solicited applications for the last three weeks of March. We had 30 people apply, so thank you so much to everybody out in the community who applied. We had an amazing pool of applicants, which made our job really hard. We did review all the applications. The committee met earlier this week, and we are moving 11 people forward to interviews. We will do those interviews over the next two weeks, and then the committee will meet on April 24th to decide which seven we will recommend for trustees, and which seats they will fill. Because if you remember, the seats are for different lengths. So we will decide that on the 24th, and then it will come to a consent agenda item for council on May 5th to ratify the appointments. So we are getting close to the end of the selection process. Very exciting.
Thanks for that, Nicole. And I just want to emphasize, we had such stellar applicants, and the 11 people we're interviewing are all just fantastic people, so we're going to be in good hands, for sure. All right. Any final thoughts? Seeing none. Thanks, everyone, for a good meeting. All gavels closed here at 10:15 PM.